All right, with the hour being after seven o'clock, having a majority, we'll open the meeting. First item of business, February, minutes of February fifteenth, motion to accept.
Second.
Second. Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed. March twenty first.
Yeah.
Knocked down. All right. All right. That being said, all right, next item, public hearing, okay, and there were public hearing pursuant to Mass General laws forty eight, section five, the planning board will hold a public hearing Thursday, April fourth at seven, the main meeting room of Town Hall. Purpose of public meetings provide interested parties the opportunity to comment on the proposed amendment to the Wapo zoning bylaws which have been submitted to the annual two thousand twenty four Spring Town Meeting. And what it says is to amend section four, establishment districts and establish section sixteen, MBTA Communities, multi-family overlay district, and amend section fourteen with definitions, order to establish a multi-family by right zoning district, meaning the compliance of Mass General laws, chapter forty eight, section three A, or do anything thereof. Okay, with that being said, rather than reading the twenty pages of it, it is open, and for anybody who's here for this, the applicant, which is the selectman, will be, will present. After they present, the board will ask questions, and then at the end, we'll allow anybody in the audience that wants to speak. And I do ask you, if you're going to speak, that you raise your hand and come up to the podium to be identified, and rename an address, and what your question is. All right, so with that being said, let's go, Mr. Duchesne.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Before going over the biologist in general, I think it might be helpful just to provide a little more context of what this law is. So just a few kind of brief slides, some basic information. I know the board knows from the fall when I met, but just to quickly go over while we're here. So the MBTA Communities Law is, is that it's a state law that was enacted in two thousand twenty one. It impacts one hundred and seventy seven communities throughout Massachusetts. Essentially, the law created a requirement for those one hundred and seventy seven communities to develop a multi-family by right district. With that, there were certain requirements that were dictated by the law. District of a reasonable size, and I'll explain that in a little bit. The district would need to be within a half mile of a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, but, you know, for Walpole commuter rail station. It would have to have a minimum gross density of fifteen dwelling units per acre. There could be no age restrictions or limits on the unit size, so you couldn't, you couldn't limit it towards only one or two bedrooms. It could not be restricted. Within the law itself, there was stipulation that the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, which they used to be called DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development, that's a state agency, they were charged with developing guidelines to further explain these, these rules. So as I said, purpose of the guidelines are really to help communities understand how to comply. So guidelines specify compliance with the law. Communities classified are basically, those one hundred and seventy seven communities are broken down into four categories based upon their proximity and size and location to a commuter rail station. Districts of reasonable size, that kind of vague term, it's further defined, in most cases, it's fifty acres. So that district would need to be around fifty acres at minimum. In addition to that minimum density of fifteen dwelling units per acre, every town has what's called a zone capacity number. So it's a requirement to determine how many multi-family units each district could be designated to accommodate. So along with this, besides zoning aspect and meeting with the board, there's a, there's a module in terms of actually proving to EHOHLC that your zoning works from a, from a numbers standpoint. So it's a, it's a unique, it's a two-phased approval after town meeting. Just to kind of further illustrate, you know, the reach of this, one hundred and seventy seven communities, as I mentioned, there's four categories. It's rapid transit, commuter rail, adjacent community, and adjacent small town. Commuter rail community, which is what Walpole is, is probably the predominant out, the community, followed by adjacent communities. How does this apply to Walpole? So those guidelines are further explained on a town-by-town basis. And so I mentioned that minimum capacity number before. So this is in addition to that fifteen dwelling units per acre number. For Walpole, it's fifteen oh six, and that number is, is derived from what is fifteen percent of the two thousand twenty housing stock. So if I kind of go back to this really quick, those four categories, for each town that has defining its capacity number, rapid transit is twenty-five percent of its total housing stock, commuter rail is fifteen percent, adjacent communities are ten percent, and a small town adjacent is five percent. So it's broken down based on the community's In addition, so each of those four communities, or those categories, have different deadlines for meeting compliance. Commuter rail and adjacent communities need to meet compliance by the end of this calendar year. So that's why we're for you for the Spring Town Meeting. So what is zone cap, zone capacity? That's a, it's a, you know, interesting term, but essentially, it's the, it's a theoretical number that's kind of based upon how your zoning is written. So looking at such things as dimensional regulations, parking regulations, height regulations, it looks at a parcel, parcel basis to factor in what is a hypothetical yield of units based upon the dimensions of a particular parcel and the breakdown of your, your zoning. But zone capacity is not, it's not limited to vacant land. So a district could be completely redevelopment. It could be on a, on a piece of area that is fully developed. It's not a requirement to construct units. It's a very big misconception. It's a zoning requirement. There's no mandate to construct. There's no mandate to build. It's a, it's a mandate to, to effectively have zoning in place that could allow for multi-family by right. It's also not concerned with existing units. It's not a calculation based upon, hey, well, we got so, this many units over here, this many units over here. Does that mean the number is reduced? It's not concerned with that. Zone capacity looks at a defined area as if essentially nothing was there. So you were to remove all structures, start anew, what is the hypothetical buildout of that particular parcel? That's essentially what zone capacity looks at. And so that capacity number, that is, however we develop the zoning, that needs to calculate out to that number to prove compliance with the Kind of go over what the law is not. I'll say this again, it is not a requirement for new housing development. It's just not. It's a requirement for zoning. It's also, there's no requirement for communities to, to override Title V or wetlands regulations. There's no options or waivers or exemptions. All, all of those one hundred and seventy seven communities, by the letter of the law, need to meet that law. And I guess I'll stop here and go back to the board. What you're looking at is the defined district itself. So what the, I should probably back up a little bit, just in case, while the select board did sponsor the article, the select board put together a steering committee. I know Ms. Chekarowski was the planning board's representative. Ms. Mathie from the select board was their, the select board's representative, and then we had five at-large members, Mr. Forsberg, Kevin Greener, Kevin Smith, Tyler Church, and A.J. LaRusso. So that steering committee met periodically from the fall and the winter to kind of go over how is this going to be constructed? Where are we going to locate this? And how are we going to create this zoning? I really want to kind of commend the steering committee and the thought that went into this. The location itself is predominantly within, it's the downtown, essentially. It's what covers, was essentially the central business district. So the underlying zoning itself is, is the central business district. The thought that also went into it was as a way to disperse density, looking at a two-subdistrict approach. So where the central core subdistrict would be more consolidated towards the train station and would have a higher, higher density, the outer core was, was a measure to try to create a more of a natural buffer and have a lower density threshold. So it was, it was a way to kind of disperse that, that number in a way that we thought was, was more or less creating a transitional zone to what would be a higher density.
Ma'am, is there a problem?
Is it possible to go back to that and actually talk about what streets that are?
Okay. As I said, hold your questions to the end.
Okay.
You can go back to him and ask him anything he wants.
Okay.
I do want to just kind of go back to that point about why this is located, where it's located. What you're looking at is a breakdown of what the existing underlying zoning is. So that blue location is what we call the central business district. That location itself already allows for a mixed-use development by right. So another huge reason for locating it here, one, it's by the train station, so it kind of, it works by just the letter of the law. It's all within a half mile of a train station, so both the area and location requirements are met. And then the existing zoning itself is, is more or less similar to what is being asked. You know, it's, while it is multi-family, which is an additional use as opposed to mixed use, it is more or less in line with the, the character of that location. The fewer the locations that are noted within the overlay district allow more or less for a, creating those transitional buffer zones. So I'd be happy to go over the zoning in detail. I know if the board typically, if you want to go around and ask questions, section by section, however, prefer.
All set?
Yep.
All right. Right now, I'll read one comment from the Board of Health dated March twentieth. The Board of Health, it's meeting March twentieth, maniously voted that they have no concerns with to the section four, creation of a multi-family by right district. All right. Now, you gave us something today.
Yes.
About modifying a bunch of stuff.
Yeah.
Well, first off, I, we can't, first, I've seen it, so I can't, us, none of us can react to it.
Understandable.
Okay, second off, we can only act within what was presented through the selectmen. We can't change it. It's not our.
It's the board's preference how they want to do it.
What?
However you want to do that.
It's not how I want to do it. It's how the guys up in the golden dome have set the laws. We can't change anything.
But you can, you can change something.
Can add it, but that's.
No, no, Phil, we can't. It's been, the article's been submitted. All we are is a recommendation board. We recommend, we can recommend you change this, but we can't change the article itself. The only way it can be changed, it has to be, like we're doing with the other one, it has to be a town meeting as a substitute motion.
Hmm.
Right?
Yep.
You can rate recommendations all day long, but, you know, we can say, yeah, maybe we should take this out, that, but we have to be contained within what was given to us and what's been advertised. And that's what everybody has.
Of course, and I didn't expect to force that.
So what you're going to end up having to do, Patrick, given the length of this and everything else, is you're going to have to, definitely going to have to have it at town meeting and explain. So that's going to be one of, someone, town meeting member's going to have to make a substitute motion for this. And then whoever's going to explain it, which will probably be you or somebody, why they need this. Then, as you know, they want to put it in, they put it in. If they don't want to put it in, they go with what we got. So speaking to this right now.
Yep.
It, it, we can't help you.
Of course.
Meaning whatever we want, especially, we just got it, you know, whenever, April fourth today. So just be aware of that. Yeah. Why's it dated April fourth? Whatever. So just keep that in mind. So now I'll open up the board before I open up to the public for any questions on this one. I'll start with John. Do you have any?
I had one, but I think I'm finding it. Difference, density and dimension regulations explaining the difference between central core and outer core, is that correct?
Could you speak up, please?
Now, there you go. That's not, that's only going to help you for TV, John.
The difference between central core and outer core is basically explained in section five, is that correct?
In terms of dimensional regulations. Yep.
Maximum units per acre. When you say maximum units per acre, are you talking dwelling units?
It uses a dwelling units per acre calculation. So that's what that is.
So in the central core, on one acre of land, you could have forty-five dwelling units?
Yeah. So dwelling units per acre is, is a typical way for trying to quantify density. Most towns will have a dwelling units per acre calculation or an FAR. So when you're looking at such small lots within the downtown itself, the number is usually higher in order
Sixty-foot maximum height, which is above our maximum limit right now.
That's for only mixed-use developments within the central core? And I can explain that further on that as well as section seven.
The non-residential component has a list of various options. As we've seen in some other objects, the non-residential component is typ, has often been left vacant. Is this going to require that the non-residential component be filled?
Really can't require it. You're just saying that this is the type of use that would be allowed within a commercial space.
So it's basically, we have an empty first floor and it's above it.
We have the same issue with most mixed-use developments.
Most of the area, well, as you said, we have to just lay out the overlay district. Do you know offhand what portion of the district is actually built on, and how much of that is actually vacant at this time?
Truthfully, all of it. If we, I don't have an aerial, but we can show you. I mean, if you're looking at the downtown itself, there's no real vacant land.
In reality, everything's already been built on, pretty much. We're just laying out the zoning district to satisfy the state as much as anything.
Yeah, you're also planning for future growth. That's usually when you.
If it's going to be done, this is the way we're going to be done.
Yes.
Okay. I think that's all for me, Jack.
Yeah, Phil?
As, as Patrick said, I was on the, the steering committee, and I wholeheartedly support this article. I think the bylaw balances complying with the MBTA community law with what fits for Walpole, having the, the two, the two areas, the two sub-districts, I think is good because of that. There's that transition from the more dense current central business district into, as you get more closer to the, to the residential districts. The, the Massachusetts legislature passed this, the MBTA Communities Act because our state has such a critical housing shortage, and it's resulted in very high housing prices and rental prices. According to Rachel Heller, Director of the Citizens Housing and Planning Association, about seventeen thousand new houses right now are built in Walpole each year, which is only half of what we need. According to her and other Massachusetts experts, we need to build two hundred thousand new units by the year twenty thirty. And unless we do that, we will not ease the, the pressure on housing prices. Right now in Massachusetts, we only do two-point-five housing starts for thousand residents compared to the United States average is five-point-zero. We're ranked forty-second at the, near the bottom of housing starts. In greater Boston area, according to the Warren Group, the median house price of greater Boston rose from two-hundred-eighty-five thousand in twenty twelve to five-hundred-and-ten-thousand in twenty twenty-one. And in Walpole, it's gone from four-hundred-thousand in twenty, twenty-eleven to over six-hundred-thousand in twenty twenty-one. So we're pricing out people who, like ourselves, our teachers, our young people, we're pricing people out of Walpole because of the, the high prices. So this, passing this bylaw, just a step to addressing the, the need for, for affordable housing as well, because bylaw also costs for affordable housing for, for developments that are, that are more units. So that's a, that's a, you know, I think a plus to have in it. So as, as, as Patrick stated, this doesn't mean this is all going to get built out. It just means that we're changing the zoning by right. Over time, some may will get built out. It depends on a lot of variables, developers, who buys the land and so forth. But it's a step in the right direction towards getting more, more housing and hopefully some more affordable housing. So I want to cement Patrick on his work and bring in this forward, because the town does have to pass this law by the, by the end of twenty twenty-four. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm not going to vote on this. I'm going to abstain because I feel I have a conflict of interest, but I have a couple of questions I'd still like to ask if I could.
Tell everybody what your conflict is.
I own a property in the CBD.
Can you speak up, please?
I have a conflict of interest, so I'm going to abstain on the vote because I own a property that could be impacted by this. I still have a couple of questions. So you made the comment, you don't have to build it out. My question is, so as a planning board, we find ourselves sitting here, forced to vote in a certain way because the rules and regulations say so. And we're not always agreeable with how we're forced to vote. So my question is, right now, if, will this bind us in the same way? So you don't have to build it out, but if someone applies for a project and they come before us and they fit into the new rules, will we be forced like we are now?
Well, I wouldn't say forced, but it would still need to go through site plan review. And so, you know, site plan review does have a high bar in terms of denial. But there's still regulation, there's still the board's input, there's still the, you know, the community's input for public hearings. So by law, you know, more or less, it is, it's site plan review. So there's just not that discretionary special permit process.
Right. We, our hands are usually tied. So the other question I had was, at a meeting we had previously, the comment was made, and I'll be honest and say, I don't remember who made it, but nobody disagreed with it, that this was the two thousand twenty-four forty B. So can you clarify for me, just because we all know what forty B is, and it has been something that has been, you know, it, it forces projects on us and takes our voice out of them. So my question is, how would you compare this to the forty B?
By and large, that it's, it's more of what I would call, you can have an inclusionary zoning component. The law actually doesn't specify that any of it needs to be affordable. You could, we, we could make this completely market rate if we so wished. The law only provides discretion that to be considered a, you know, a by right, multi-family, we can impose a ten percent affordability restriction for new developments that would, you know, apply through this zoning. So the, the steering committee, myself, we discussed that. And so we did incorporate an affordability restriction of the, the minimum, which is ten percent. Some towns did go beyond that, but that reason is kind of, it, it's interesting. So you could go beyond ten percent, but you need to do what's called an economic feasibility analysis through the state. You need to get a third-party reviewer. You need to basically prove to the state, oh, we want to have an affordability restriction of, say, fifteen percent. We could just, we understand that with growth, we do want to kind of manage those SHI numbers. So if something were to apply through the MBTA zoning, we wouldn't want to miss out on at least recouping ten percent, which is the, the minimum. So it's not a forty B where the forty B is exempt from your zoning entirely. There's no twenty-five percent affordable. There's no list of waivers from a developer where they're, you know, wanting exemption from this and that, and they want variances. It, it's still something that has restriction and control, as written within the zoning. The only affordable component is just, it's more or less an inclusionary affordability requirement.
And then my last one is, so can you just give us an example? So if you own a quarter-acre lot in the core of, you know, the new core.
Yep.
What would it look like now versus what would it look like with this in place?
So I can show you, but it's, it's kind of math-related. So one second. See this? They can send this to the board later if they want to review it. But essentially, what I mentioned earlier, beyond creating the zoning, it's the calculation through modeling to prove that you meet those compliant, that, that, that zone capacity number. So what this looks at, and this, this table was developed by, by the Executive Office and Housing and Livable Communities. It looks at basically your dimensional regulations. You compute that into the system. I'll go to the tab just to show you. And then it looks at the, the makeup of the parcels that are actually within that district.
So.
This page right here, I won't go through it entirely, but essentially, everything from, that you see on that dimensional regulations page is put in here for each sub-district itself. So that number is, you know, it's brought forward through different, through the, the different, the district, sorry, the different district tabs that actually look at the parcel layer itself.
So district one, this is essentially our central core district. Below you is, is the, the assessors' information for the parcels that are within that central core district. It looks at, you know, ownership. It looks at what is considered buildable land. It can, looks at, you know, the size of the parcel itself. It, it factors in what a capacity number would be for units based upon the dimensions of that parcel and the, and the dimensions you incorporate. So the one thing that makes this unique, and I think for, you know, other people in my position, it's, it's a little bit trouble.
So the one thing that makes this unique, and I think for, you know, other people in my position, it's a little bit troubling, is its gross density. It's so gross density, like though that 15 dwelling units per acre number, it's on a gross density. So it looks at roads, it looks at non-buildable locations that are within your district. So you may have, let's say, 100 parcels within a district, but you have all this non-buildable area that counts against you in terms of that, reaching that 15 dwelling units per acre number. So you see something like a 45 dwelling units per acre for a central core. But the reality is, I'm just going to highlight where it goes to the dwelling units per acre, where the total is, dwelling units per acre all the way to the right. Both sub-districts, when you factor in all the gross area, the area that's non-buildable, the district is actually, it's a dwelling units per acre calculation of actually 21.
Maybe, maybe I can simplify things.
Sorry.
Simplify the question, I think. So where I am.
Yeah.
You know where I am.
Mm-hmm.
It's a quarter, it's a quarter acre and it's buildable. So are you telling me I could put 56 units on that piece of property?
Would you say that?
Well, 56, so the dwelling units per acre, you have 200.
So it's a quarter acre, right?
Yep. So if you divide it by four, is that 212 or 21?
No, a quarter acre would be 11 units, but then you have to factor in what's the parking requirements, what is the dimensional requirements.
So it's only 11, so it's not like you're exploding.
No, yeah, exactly. So it's 11 just looking at the dwelling units per acre. And this is, this is kind of complicated when you go over the Excel, but it takes in the other elements of the zoning. And so the number for your parcel, it may be less than 11.
But even, I mean, to put 11 on such a small, I mean, if you're going to put parking and you'd have to go high. And so when I was looking at the, you have it. So on page three, it says in the chart, and this might be my interpretation, I might be reading it completely wrong, Pat, so just, that's why I'm just looking for clarification.
Of course.
So it says maximum height, maximum stories four in the central core. But then when you jump down to A, it says maximum height is five stories, 60 feet. So is it five stories or four stories?
No, it's mixed use.
It's only for a mixed use development.
So you have the empty, it'll be empty and you got to go build up like everyone else is doing.
So you could go four stories above.
Four stories above like retail, you have retail and four stories above that.
So four stories, if you were doing multifamily with, because you are, your building is in the central core. So if you were to do a mixed use, you have the provision for five stories, 60 feet. The reason that's in there, so the reason that one as well as section seven, is with an overlay district, a developer still has the option to utilize the underlying zoning. As we know, you're allowed mixed use by right within the central business district. Well, we don't really regulate density currently in how the zoning is written. There's a, there's a calculation based upon what is your, the square footage of the commercial. You're allowed three and a half times that for the residential. What a developer could fit in there is really kind of if they can meet other requirements of their zoning in terms of parking, in terms of dimensional regulation. This goes a step further by quantifying and like capping that density at a certain number. In some situations, the number that is factored in from that Excel table I showed you is less than what was actually built on a few of the developments that are existing in the downtown. It's because that number is, it's quantified, it's not open-ended. In section seven and as well as that, that whole portion about you're allowed that increase in height, it's trying to encourage if a developer is going to do mixed use, that they apply for a mixed use development under the overlay, not our existing zoning. The other portion of the.
But our existing zoning wouldn't allow five stories, right?
It wouldn't, well, it's 52 feet in terms of it doesn't specify stories. But there are provisions where we've seen projects that have requested beyond that. And this is where it's trying to at least alleviate the need for a variance if someone wants to utilize that. There's also the provision within the mixed use section of this bylaw where that commercial area, it mostly just needs to be, it needs to be public facing and publicly accessible, but there's no, there's no connection between the size of your commercial equating to the size of your residential. So there's no need for excessive commercial space. So a developer that wants to do mixed use, that actually wants to, they're going to build commercial space that's usable and fees, and actually impractical, practical and something that could be utilized. So that's why, you know, why we're trying to encourage mixed use because we want to try to preserve that downtown, that, that commercial element to the downtown. You have to try to incentivize it essentially. You have to try to incentivize the developer to, to go in that direction rather than the other options they have, which would be just pure multifamily, which that's the whole nature of the bylaw, or a mixed use development under our existing zoning.
I'm all set.
All set, Paul?
All right, Patrick. Questions, number one, who determined this zoning now?
The overlay or?
Overlay, yes.
So the overlay was done by myself in our steering committee. So the steering committee, I mentioned earlier, it's, it's seven members, two are appointed, five are at-large. We looked at essentially what was given to us from the state in terms of what was identified as developable station areas. And I won't go over into too much detail, but we know it needs to be a half mile from a train station. We have a main commuter rail station, which is in the downtown. It was the most logical location.
But why didn't you go the other way? Why didn't you go towards like West Street? Robbins Road.
Towards Robbins Road.
Go on the other side, right? And there's two sides of a track, right? So everything seems to be coming through the center of town.
So part of the reason is, a lot of that area is zoned industrial. And so while there's no specification that you can't have the overlay within an industrial, the thought is, you know, you wouldn't want to have a residential development next to something that could be at a high intensive use, like, you know, which would bind up a factory. So the downtown already allows for similar zoning, so it made more sense to keep it within that location.
But again, if you say that it doesn't have to be billed upon, it just has to, the overlay has to exist and has the right to, then what would be the problem with that, going the other way? Do you know what I'm saying? Like you said, you said, why would you want a residential near industrial? I would agree to that. But you, you said also that every parcel didn't have to be billed upon, correct?
That's right, but I think from the nature of looking at our existing zoning, we're trying to find a location that is probably most accommodating towards that use. So the use within the downtown is fairly similar to what this is proposing. So it's nothing that's out of the ordinary for that location. So it didn't make sense to put it in a completely new location that is, a lot of it's wetlands, it's owned industrial. It's not really a location that already allows for that use. So if the downtown location already allows for mixed use, there's not much of a difference between what the overlay proposes and what our existing zoning does.
Okay. Does the, does the, if it's already zoned a certain way and this gets put on it.
Yeah.
Do you lose the existing zoning already?
You don't.
You don't.
So an overlay just provides additional options for developers. It's uses that are in addition to what they could already do with the underlying zoning.
Right. Well, again, you know, as a person of this town, I mean, I think we would agree. I can't necessarily voice my concern, but it's just, you know, I think we see so many residential dwellings.
Yep.
And I don't hear about enough talk about commercial. I mean, make, make five floors of commercial, not, you know, four floors of residential with retail space, the promise of it. Because, you know, we have units uptown now that have promises of retail space and there hasn't been for years, a single retail been placed in there. So again, I don't want to voice any things, that's not the planning board's job. It's just more, this seems to, this seems to really, I think, like Katie said, puts us in a place that kind of forces our hand. Because again, if a developer now comes in, they do have the right, right? Because of the zoning. And it seems like zoning here in this town, I just needs attention. And I'll leave it at that, just needs attention. And this is just, to me complicates zoning a little bit more.
Yeah, so that's certainly your opinion.
It is my opinion. And I'm sorry, I'm not, but again, I think that the town of Walpo would agree to this, though. I mean, you know, because then with every, with this here, you know, requires more resources and so forth. And I would ask the town is, what is the benefit we get for this to be overlaid? I feel like, I appreciate, hold on, hold on, hold on, Phil. I appreciate, you know, the, you know, somebody coming into this town and able to not have to pay a million dollars for a brand-new house. It seems that's the going rate here for the town of Walpo. I get that. But, I mean, you know, we want to lower our taxes. We, we want to make sure that, you know, our resources are plentiful for all of Walpo to have. And with every, you know, dwelling that a developer now comes upon us, just which is strange, which then we need more, 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 which is more money, more money, more money. And, you know, my concern with placing this on top of the existing zoning, it just, like I said, it does give the option and I get that, but who is mandating that we do this? I mean, is there any, have you surveyed any other towns around us that have said, no, we're not doing it? Or is there every town forced to do this? I know, you had a chat, I'm sorry, you were going.
So I mentioned earlier, this is law. With that law, has, there's a few elements that are written specifically within Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 3A, in terms of, you know, if you're not compliant with the zoning by your timeframe, you lose eligibility for a few different grant programs. I mentioned, it's, one is Mass Works, which is a very, very important infrastructure program. There's two projects in town, you know, off of Coney Street and Union Street that were just recently funded. The Housing Choice Grant Program actually just received funding for that to do a zoning audit and recodification, which is something that's definitely looking at the bigger picture, the town's zoning. The state further provided a big background of, I think it's 13 different grant programs that a community would be penalized for, for non-compliance. I won't go over all of them, but, you know, those programs do offer a lot of potential for looking at critical areas, particularly brownfield redevelopment is always, is a great program. And then something that's, you know, been in the news, and I think everyone can think of Milton in particular, the Attorney General's office beyond, you know, the change to the law, which was a legislative action, the Attorney General's office has indicated that they will consider legal action against communities that are non-compliance. So with that, there comes, yeah.
Yeah. It's good to know, that's all.
Yes, of course.
I mean, you know, you do want, you do want to know the penalties if we don't comply, so, and I get it. I'm good, Jack.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. I got a few, especially since this is getting dumped on the planning board's lap. One of the things you just went through and what happened, Milton, the town voted against it. The town had a referendum and voted to get this down, correct? Town meeting voted yes, they had a referendum and voted down. And the last thing I read is Attorney General had to pull back her lawsuit, correct?
I have not heard that.
That was in the paper.
Oh, actually I have town council here.
Okay. And the other towns that I've heard are saying no, Foxborough, Rockport, just keep them going, so.
So Amy Questle, town council, I'm with KP Law. Milton is an ongoing lawsuit. The Attorney General absolutely did not withdraw her complaint.
And when I read, it said that there was some legal proceeding, she didn't do it right.
Nope, it is at the SJC. So the town of Milton tried to have the, tried to have the complaint knocked down from the Supreme Judicial Court to Superior Court, which is where, usually where a lawsuit starts. That, they were not successful in doing that. It stayed at the SJC and the argument will be in, will be in October. The town of Rockport is going to have their town meeting on their, well, first of all, the town of Rockport in May of 2022 enacted MBTA community zoning. And unfortunately, they, they did, they kind of jumped the gun, they did it before the guidelines came out. So they are amending their current, their current zoning in, on April 29th. They're having a special town meeting with two articles to amend their current MBTA zoning. Plymouth is going to town meeting on Saturday. Westboro went to town meeting on the 23rd. Wellesley has enacted it. There was about, I would say there was about 10 communities that have enacted it in the past two weeks. As you know, we're coming into town meeting season. So many, many communities have the MBTA zoning on their spring town meeting. That way, if there is some kind of hiccup or anything, they can go back in the fall and fix it for, at a fall town meeting, if there is a fall town meeting. And then just quickly, with regard to Mr. Smith's question as to penalties, the chairman is correct. In Milton, there was a town meeting vote that approved the zoning. There was then a referendum. That referendum happened on a, on a Tuesday on March 13th. And on Wednesday morning, March 14th, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities took away $140,000 worth of grants that had been granted to Milton. They pulled those back and then on Friday, March, no, actually, it was, I think it was the next week, the Attorney General filed suit. So penalties are, appear to be swift from the Commonwealth.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Going along that same line, all I read here is, I have a copy of, you know, 48, 3A, right off the press tonight. It says, all we lose is eligible funds from Housing Choice Initiative, but I see all these other ones.
Correct, Mr. Chairman. So there's three, there were, in the original legislation, there were three grants noted. That legislation was amended to add for four grants. That legislation allows for guidelines to be enacted by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. They enacted guidelines with 13 grants that they claim stem from those grants that are in the legislation.
Okay. Now, question, two things. One is, how much are we going to lose, Pat?
In terms of current funding?
How much are you going to lose a year?
I couldn't quantify that, it'd depend on what grants are lying for.
Okay, I don't want to hear in the future, okay. What have we had to date from, under this?
Today I have 65,000 for a zoning re-audit and re-codification.
So that's, so right now, we've only benefited to the 265 grand.
I think we actually also have our Mass Works grant, but that was a few years ago.
So we're talking somewhere under 100K to redo the whole town. This is the carrot they hold. They're going to hold out $100,000, we're going to hold back from you if you don't do it. To me, that ain't, that ain't worth wrecking the downtown.
I don't think it wrecks the downtown.
Well, I, well, I'm just pointing out to people, what are we going to lose? We're going to lose 10 million, 10 cents? Right now, it sounds under $100,000. But the other question, it's not even a question, this isn't a law that we have to do, the way I read it. I'm not a lawyer, but I've read enough contracts in my day. It says, you've got to do this, but if you don't, we're going to take the money away. So they're not making you do it, they're just going to take money away. To me, that's not a law that says you must do it. It's a punishment if you don't. Is that correct?
So, Mr. Chairman, that is a, it's an excellent question. I have argued in court along those exact lines. The Attorney General does not agree. The Attorney General, in the Milton case, they filed suit against the town of Milton. And in that case, they are asking for either, if Milton refuses to cooperate, they are asking for the legislature to order the zoning in Milton, or they are asking for a special master to come in and order the zoning. So as, as I stated previously, that is not going to argument until October. So we don't know whether the Attorney General would be successful in that or not, so.
Yeah, you go around and around.
Can I ask a question?
All right, can I finish?
Yes.
I'll let you go. What doesn't make any sense is, they wanted a law, what they put this little bonus in here for. So basically say, we want you to do it, and if you don't, we're going to take this away from them. So they know they can't force it. One thing I have read is state cannot inflict zoning requirements on the individual towns. Is that, isn't that a law in Mass?
Zoning is generally a home rule, but however, again, I just have to repeat that clearly the Attorney General does not agree because she did file suit.
Of course.
And the SJC clearly thinks that this is worth their time because they had the chance to kick it down to Superior Court and they did not.
I want everybody here tonight who cares about this, is the fact that the state cannot mandate what our zones look like.
The Attorney General is asking the state to do that.
Well, now they're trying to go back after they've created this, but that's why this little bonus thing was in here. Because they knew they couldn't do it.
It appears that there is, there's a mandate and there's a penalty in the current legislation.
And they recognize the fact that they can't mandate zoning, but they can only penalize you for not giving you some extra money, correct?
And the Attorney And they're, the Attorney General is focusing, you, you have the legislation in front of you. The Attorney General is focusing on the word "shall" in Section A. That every community, every MBTA community shall have a reason, a zoning of a reasonable size, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, if you were around 10 years ago here, that came up at town meeting, "shall", that thing got banted back and forth.
Shall and may.
Yeah, there, there you go. That's exactly what it was. All right. Now, I get a bunch more. Patrick, since this was, Board of Sclakman voted to sponsor this and everything, what did, what was their vote on this article as it's written?
I believe it's unanimous.
They voted, not, you vote to send it, just like we do, but did they vote it when it's in its completion?
Yeah.
Okay. You know what the vote was?
It was unanimous, from what I recall.
Unanimous, because there were three people there, you know what I mean? I just wanted for the record, that's all.
I'll say five, zero.
Okay, so, okay. Now, another question. Why wasn't this a special permit?
Why wasn't Arin to have a special permit?
Yes.
Because the law states that it can't. The law has to say...
I read, I don't read anything here that says it can't. We...
It says as of right. Multifamily zoning as of right.
As of right. Okay, thank you. Question on your map, oh, before I get to the map.
Yep.
And like I said, since you put it in my court, I want to do, make sure you change. On this first section, you say Section 4, but I think you might want to add 1- A overlay. I know you can read it, but you know how this goes?
Yeah.
Is when, you got it here, all right? You did it there, perfect. But up here, it's, yeah, this is, I hear from lawyers all the time, it's a scrivviness error or a clerical error, but it's, what you want to do is refer the exact one. It's not a big deal. I don't know if you've, just point that out. I know you started with Section 4. It's easy to find, but we go by each individual ones. Moving along. Your map.
Yep.
I don't quite understand how you can have a map in the future. Can you explain the May 6 date?
It's a date of town meeting.
Yeah, but can you do that?
It says I can't.
That's when it's enacted.
Yeah, but typically, it comes out the date it was drawn, and then you put down the bottom, enacted, another date.
I mean...
But my point is, you, someone pick it up, how did this happen?
It's a draft right now, because it hasn't been enacted.
I know, but you got a map dated, that's what you keep referring to. All right, as long as you think it's gonna go through. I'm looking at it, because I do this, my business is, you put the date, and then you put accepted date. That's all. As long as you're comfortable with it.
Yep.
I'm only pointing out some of the little things. Your map here, I don't see it, I didn't scale it off. But, you got it so that you can, someone can see that the final, the up, the top tip is only .5 miles away? I don't see that on here.
So, the map that I gave you...
I got two maps here.
A smaller one, because...
But there's nothing on here that says it's point, it's a half a mile from the T.
Oh.
You'd need that, at least in my opinion, because someone could challenge us.
I, I don't, so you want me to have like a buffer, like a circle saying it's within a half mile of the T?
Well...
For the map, it doesn't need to. For the state, I need to prove it is, though.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, when someone looks at a map and says it's a half a mile away, you would think that you would put it on here. That's how, in my business, you put everything on the plan. So, because someone's gonna challenge us that within a half a mile. And if it's a little more than a half a mile, you might have a problem. That's all. All right. That's standard business practice for putting it on a map. I won't put Kyle on the spot, but it would be nice to have it there. I'm just saying, whatever you guys figure, so if someone's looking at it. The other thing is, this map, it kind of reminds me of our overlap water resource protection. And it looks like you tried to go by lots, correct?
So, that's actually on purpose.
Do you have this, a flick of the bit could, just at this scale, could you put you 10 feet over on someone else's property, do you know what I mean? So, this was not defined by meets and bounds, which you would take on a normal...
So, this is, I hear what you're saying. So, part of this, beyond creation of the map, beyond the creation of zoning, which I know you're very familiar with, it's that whole element of proving this and providing that data to the, to HLC. And so, they need whole lots within, that are accounted within your district. So, we were instructed by, by their guidelines, that I need to have that part, that line follow the, what is essentially the parcel line. It's GIS, and I know GIS is not exact, as opposed to drafting, that you'd find in CAD, but that's the model that they want us to use.
Okay. But I'm just saying, if it was written like that, then you don't get into that. This is down the road. Someone's gonna say, look at that. I got, I'm in it, I'm not in it, whatever. If it's defined by lot lines, that's, you can't argue that. Okay?
Yep.
Uh, split lot, what do you do in that case? Ones in the inner, ones in the outer? How does that?
Same way we would handle any split zoning.
But it doesn't say that in here. That's the problem. You gotta remember, we got a rule on this. So, there's no, how do you rule, this is all supposed to be self-contained. We can't go outside of it. So, how would you rule on a split lot?
Well, the lot isn't split, but I know, the boundary is split, is what you're saying. So, if I had, if I had a lot within, say, the outer core and the central core, you would look at it the same way you would look at if I had property, if I owned a parcel in industrial, and then I own a parcel in RA, I can't have that used.
I'm not, I understand how to do it. But that's in our book right now. This trumps what's in our book. That's what I'm saying. I'm looking down the road, that someone's gonna come up to me and say, look, I got a piece in the, in the, in a court.
When there's a conflict.
Yeah. So, it only trumps when there's a conflict.
There's what?
When there's a conflict.
Yeah.
Yeah. So...
So, how would we, as a board, gonna do the, by right, how would we address that? If we said, no, we gotta do it like this. And they'll say, how can you say that? It's not in your new section.
Usually, when the overlay leaves off, your underlying zoning picks back up. So, if it's not covered in here, it defaults to what your existing zoning says.
Well, you've created a new one. All right.
Yep.
I'm not supposed to go to the lawyers anymore. Forty and 20. The law is specific, it says 15 minimum, correct? So, we went to 40 and 20, correct?
And that's because gross density, that I mentioned earlier, takes into account everything else. So, that number, when actually looked at total, it's far reduced from 45, it comes out to 21.
Okay. All right. It's kind of murky, at least in my opinion, and I've been doing this long enough, that if I think it's murky, someone else is. I don't get a sense of where it says, this is under Section 30. It says, you, you go to these sections for us. But it doesn't say, this will be filed under Section 13 of site plan. It doesn't jump out at you. It's kind of buried in there. Just, I'm asking, you guys can check it out, at least advise. But I'm just saying, I want something, if I'm, if I'm gonna do this. Where does it say? Boom, this is how I do it.
I mean, it's in, I guess, Section 15-8, which is the MCMOD Development Planner Approval. A, development within the MCMOD shall should be subject to site plan review under Section 13 of this bylaw. So, there's a section that covers...
Okay. All right, if that covers it. All right. Uh, it's, why is it blank on a corner lot on your chart?
So, that is another element that was added. It really doesn't need to be added. So, one of the recommendations was to just remove that.
You're gonna take it out. That's why I just flipped to your yellow one. Okay, that's fine. It's fine. The guy you sent it to is on the ball. Oh, here's the big question. All right, you're requiring 10% affordable. We don't have to. We don't have to do anything about it, correct?
Correct.
So, if I build an apartment of 100 units, an apartment, and I put in 10%, under 40B, that entire 100 units would count towards our safe harbor?
If it was a 40B development, yeah.
What will this count?
I only get 10%.
So, you only get 10. So, this isn't benefiting us for, down the road. This is not gonna protect us once we get, build more houses and we go over our safe harbor.
Well, that's the nature of inclusionary zoning in general. We, if it's a, if it's a 40B development, then it has a whole different set of guidelines. Same with a LIP. Those you can...
I understand, but I just want everybody to understand. I'm doing this for everybody. Just because we put 10% in there, we don't get 100%. Correct?
Yes.
So, this doesn't help us down the road?
I would say it does, in the sense that it's an option to at least have incremental growth towards our SHI. Yeah, if you had a 40B development in general, you count all the units if it's a rental. I think we all know, we want to try to get past the 40B and be in...
So, this is not going, so it's, it's one unit, whatever's affordable, that's all it counts for. Unlike Summer Street, which is 300 units, so, and then we get 300 towards our total count.
Yeah.
Okay. Explain to everybody who doesn't understand that, because that doesn't jump out anywhere. Matter of fact, what you said tonight, I didn't even realize you didn't have to. Because what you, all this stuff you got up here, isn't in their little law, right?
Yeah.
The state, they don't spell everything out.
Yeah, no, you're right. That's why they develop the guidelines.
All right. So, that's done. All right. You got a bunch of definitions, Patrick?
Yep.
Some we got in the book, some are new, some are a little different. This is my own.
Okay.
You guys need to look at it to make sure that, okay, what's a bank? We all think we know what a bank is, but I'm gonna have guys in front of me that will tell you different. You know what I mean? All right. You have a restaurant, and I'm pointing out, you want to go back to definitions. Some of them line up. Got it. Some of them are, look like they're more than what's there, like restaurants. You define restaurants in the definition of zoning book, but here, you say with or without alcohol. It's a whole different thing. So, if it's not in the book, you're gonna have, at least my opinion, you have to put it under definitions. I don't think we can have definitions within it. Like, one of them says a personal service, and et cetera. I don't know what that means. We have retail sales already in there. We don't have grocery, specialty food. But I'm just looking down the road of some of these. We have, oh, here's one. It's kind of, we have medical dental office, labs. We don't have medical dental office. Is...
So, you say, where it says medical or dental office, we have one or the other.
What I'm saying is, you're gonna look at it and make sure that if the definition is, you think it's clear, or you want to expand on it, that's fine. But we want to be able to do this. We don't want to, like, determine here some night at a meeting, what is a bank? I mean...
No, that's a good point. Thanks, Jack.
All right. Standards, parking, I see what you, you have here, but you said if it's not in there, you go to what's on the underlying, underlying, I should say. What's your opinion on shared parking? Is that allowed or not?
Shared parking?
Yeah.
No, so we only have...
We have shared parking in our zoning.
Oh, yeah.
So, like, for instance, down, you go down to 204 and St. Mary's.
Yep.
They, it's, that's shared parking.
Yeah.
But there's nothing that talks about it here. It doesn't, if it's not, if you have it in your main book, then it either should be addressed here or not, so that we don't get there. Because someone could say, you can, I'm gonna build this right here, but next to me is this vacant lot. It's not even in this district that is where you can park. So, I would think something to address shared parking, whether you say no, no shared, or something to that effect.
Okay.
But I'm trying to make this nice and tight, so that there's no stuff down the road for us to be worried about, when we do have our hearings. All right?
Yeah.
And I'm trying to think, we've had a car, I can't remember anyone else, but that's definitely, the only time we've done it, it's like a restaurant and church, because they don't run at the same time.
Makes sense.
That's then, so, we don't want to run. This is something, you could see that happening too, I imagine.
Yeah.
So, I just want to, want to make sure and that. So, those are all the issues that I went through, mine, so...
No, thank you.
Yeah. We'll see if you change them, huh?
I have another question.
I'm sorry, Kay had one.
No, mine, mine got answered.
Okay. Sorry. John, open up.
Just looking at the map again, and I'm assuming the names here are the owners of the properties. Is that correct?
Yeah, so that's what's written within our zoning bylaws for doing a map change.
That's fine.
Yep.
Considering there are like, three properties within this general area that are all MBTA-owned, wouldn't it have made sense to include those areas within your outer core sub-district?
Which, which properties in general?
Across the railroad, where you have water on each side of Elm Street.
So, the one thing, though, when it's a publicly-owned property, we count the area, but we, there's no build-out on a publicly-owned property. So, you'll notice, like, the commons are included here. That only thing that's counting from that is this square footage. We don't, we can't, it's publicly-owned, you're not gonna build on the commons. So, same thing with T-property. You can't build on publicly-owned property.
So, it doesn't add to your cap?
It doesn't count.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, anyone?
Actually, just one clarification. So, Patrick, just back to my original thing about going on the other side, you know, for the zone, for the, for the overlay.
Yeah.
Just so I understand. So, I understand the penalties and so forth, but is it that you just have to show the state that you have this overlay, and you've allowed for it to happen, therefore, they don't come and they penalize the town of Walpole? So, to that point, why doesn't the staring committee consider that? To, to do that, so, again, the penalties, I understand that people don't want to be penalized.
Yeah.
But it doesn't make sense for me to say, well, it's industrial, and you don't want to do that.
It's a good point. The staring committee looked at a bunch of locations. We did look over the, on the side of the bridge. I think at one point, I might have suggested even locating, you can actually locate part of the district not within the half-mile. It's a whole different ball of wax. But ultimately, in a scenario where, if you're gonna create something like this, it can be used. So, if you're putting it in a location, like I mentioned, that may not be, let's say hospitable is right, where, but it may not be appropriate for housing, you're taking that risk of it possibly being developed for housing. So, I think the purpose of having it where it's located is because it's more in line with what already exists in that location. And then also, I mentioned earlier, it, a lot of that area is just non-buildable. And, but I mean by that, not just from, you know, hey, it's non-buildable. We can't actually count portions of it. There's a whole thing called, it's density denominator. I don't want to bring up my Excel again, but essentially that area, we can't even count that area. It's non-buildable, and that area can't even count for, towards our square, towards our actual acreage requirements. So, it wouldn't, it just didn't make sense, just because of the physical constraints and then the existing zoning.
So, just to, just to quickly add to that, under Section 3A, under 48, Section 3A, it says that MBTA community shall have a zoning ordinance or bylaw that provides, and then it says, such multifamily housing shall be without age restrictions, and shall be suitable for families with children. And I do have a community that placed their overlay over a, over an underlying zone that's industrial-zoned.
Okay.
And there's, hasn't been, HLC has not given us a compliance decision yet, but there was comments that perhaps industrial is not suitable for families with children.
Thank you. Thank you.
We could have put it in a swamp, and the state wouldn't know.
They would know there's a swamp there.
How would they know? Are they gonna come out? No, they're not gonna come out. They're just gonna pass this, go boom, boom, boom.
They're not gonna come out, but I think I mentioned that it, when we, there's a model, so they, that Excel I provided, they have all that data.
Yeah, but you'd have to show, but you'd have to, you'd say, look, I don't think it's wetlands. That's all I'm saying. It's a matter of, just like we have to have them stake it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's ways to get around that stuff. All right, Phil, before we open?
I just want to make a comment that, you know, the purpose of this is to get more for, for housing, not for housing, but just more housing, because we do have this huge shortfall. And I think the best, you know, we want to put it in the right place. So, putting it in our, our business district, near the, near the train station, that's where we want housing to be. And I think that's a real plus. And, and people don't like 40B, but we got 40B because towns weren't doing enough to produce housing. And so, that was a state kind of taking the hammer to us. And if we get to our 10% subsidized housing inventory, 40B, we get control of 40B, and hopefully, we're close to that.
Phil, I'm not gonna get in a political argument, but all the state did is take all the public housing they used to do and put it into the towns for us to do it. They just went, so, because you don't see that being built anymore. So, anyway. Anyone from the audience, if you have a question, comment, you gotta come up here. Need your name and address, and you're on TV, so comb your hair, smile.
Jerry McCarty, 262 Plington Street. We talked about it, I, unfortunately, I read it, but I forgot the date. But what are the dimensional issues that I can, I'm concerned of is height. And the, and the reason being is, in the state, because I'm involved in the construction industry, and I'm dealing something over at North Quincy, in that the state has the, that's part of this program. And that is, you look at those units, it's up there. And so, what happens is, the esteemed board committee determined that zoning at the 50, 50 feet or 52 feet. And if, if the state's demanding it to allow for 60 feet in height?
No, that's, the town has decided that.
The town has decided that?
Everything within this, dimensionally, is the town has made that decision to go that high.
Okay, so, we're not, so, what, like, so, with... Okay, so we're not... My... So what happens, then someone can't come in and decide to say, well, you have to get density. Obviously, you know and I know, the only way you're gonna get density, your lot goes vertical. So is... So we... So you guys can have control over that?
Yeah, right now, if they come in with all housing, they can only go 50 feet.
Yeah.
We have, I think, 55 on highway business is the most, or 52. They wanna do something under, you know, like we get downtown, all those wonderful shops that nobody's there. They can... They allowing you just to go shove this in, and the rest of it goes up to 60 feet.
60 feet. Okay, so that's a town, wasn't it?
Yeah, it's towns. That's what they've proposed here.
That's the only thing I worry about. It's this, I know, housing is just the, is the vertical height is the...
Yep.
Thank you.
Did I speak wrong?
Just the 60 feet is only as an incentive for mixed use, so not multifamily. If it's a multifamily development...
I know. So you just... All you do is you got this, and you go like this. So you're just moving up your five floors, that's all.
Yeah, but it's only for that red area. It's the central core, and it's only to encourage someone to do mixed use under this zoning rather than the existing zoning.
Okay, before you sit down, Patrick, I got a question. One thing I don't like in here, but, you know, there's no penalty for having vacancies anymore, is there?
Penalty for having like vacancies?
I mean, I've been doing this, I've been doing a lot of work in Boston, my company, and everybody loves these podiums, they call them, because there's nobody on that first floor. All the money's up here, and if they rent it, eh, I rent it, but all the money's upstairs. So if we have this, we could still have the same thing. There's no incentive that says within so many months or whatever that you have to put something in there.
But you gotta understand that if it's multi... So if the developer's like, I'm not concerned about commercial. I don't want commercial. All I want is multifamily. They can do that by right, but they're limited to, um, I think it's a four stories, 50 feet.
No, I understand what to do.
However, if they wanna do commercial, like a mixed use, the way we have it right now, if they want residential, they have to do mixed use, and that's why there's all that excessive commercial. So if they wanna do commercial...
And if you're a smart developer, you might as well, it's not gonna cost you that much more to go up that extra floor. So you... I think you'll get a ton of it. But anyway.
Okay.
Since he brought that up, I forgot to ask that. Thank you. Anyone else? Ma'am? Nope.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe you said that Foxborough wasn't gonna go along with this?
Yeah, from what I understand, Foxborough was one that's... They're talking about it.
Would it be beneficial to us if we joined maybe Milton's lawsuit and got Foxborough to join us in Milton's lawsuit and perhaps... Because this is really...
Yeah.
To have the... To have the T-MBTA force this down our throats is just despicable.
From where a plan is going, can't necessarily do it, but what I have read on this, because this has been out for a bit, is a lot of people up on the hill are like getting nervous, because the... The people are revolting
Yes.
against this. They thought it would be great, and now all of a sudden, these towns, and once their voters... Not the guys in Boston, they don't care, but out here in the burbs, we vote for them. And now, once Rockport, and this is starting to swell a little bit, we'll see where it goes. But yeah, what you said, but you might wanna contact or see what everybody's doing. I try to look online. It's hard to find if anybody's doing this and when they're doing it.
I could do that.
Okay, thank you. Ma'am?
Thank you. Lucy McNamara, 16 Clear Pond Drive.
Anybody who's doing this and what?
It was hard to listen to your wonderful presentations without greater detail of what this map was. So if you don't mind, I'm gonna walk up, or I would love you to walk up to the map and talk about which roads are in the red zone and which roads are in the blue zone.
So... We'll start at the top. This is the first, I guess, outer core. That is Maple. This is school, so it's the block from Maple School, Main Street. This is East Street, as it runs from school to Elm, Glenwood Ave. We're a little portion of Stone Common, but Common is really... It's not really utilized that much. This is also 1A, Main, uh, Riverview Place, but I think right there, that's actually, I know that's apartment lawn for Spring West. A small portion of Spring Street. The real reason including that is because I mentioned earlier that we need to have full parcels as part of the calculation. It's not actually a built full location, though. West Street, and it's not really labeled properly, but that portion of it's called Little West Street. Yeah, that's... Those are the roads.
I really appreciate you fleshing that out. So of particular interest to the people on Clear Pond Drive is the development at West Street and Spring Street. It's a total of 1.87 acres. If it's in the blue zone, that's a maximum of 20 units per acre. Which brings it to less than what's proposed. What's proposed is 131 units.
I don't know if it's that much, but it is proposed at a number... So using the zoning, and this is all really their estimates when we do the modeling, it is in a lower dis... Uh, lower density district, and that's by design. Here, you wanna have more of a transitional gradual buildup into higher density. The build-up, it's around 40.
Okay.
Around 40 is about the area.
Okay, is that in agreement with the people from representing the Spring Street and West Development? How many units is it supposed to be?
Okay, well, you know...
Okay, so how do we get to 95?
Okay, what you gotta underst... All right, what you gotta understand, if that's allowed right now to do 95 units, they don't have to do this MBTA. That doesn't trump what's already in place.
So that's under CBD zoning?
Whatever it is, yeah. It goes back... They can put it in whatever they want, as long as it's within the rules. They don't have to use these rules that's being proposed. They go back to what's already in the book.
Okay, I appreciate that clarification. Thank you so much.
And Jack, in that sense, a lot of the area we're talking about, developers already can build large, you know, fairly large developments.
Yeah.
Because the zoning allows it in Central Business District.
All right, anyone else? We all... Hello, Peter?
Hello. So I'm Peter Galanis. I live on Clarkson Drive. And I'm here because I got an email that said you folks were going to discuss plans for building a 90-unit apartment complex.
That's next.
Oh, that's coming up, okay. My second... My other question would be, what makes you think that when we do additional... If and when we do additional housing, it will be affordable? You said affordable housing. What makes you think that anybody who builds housing in this town is gonna make it affordable? Because I think the new units that are coming up, they're not affordable.
What I said was that this allows for 10%, for developments more than 10 units.
Okay.
But it's not that. The main focus is more housing, not affordable housing. It's more housing, which hopefully brings out the price.
Okay, so more housing... I have a hard time getting through town every morning, and I see more construction, more construction. And it's a burden on the schools, it's a burden on the water supply. I'm not an expert, but it seems to me like we're building at a crazy rate in this town. And it just doesn't make sense to me. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Nope.
Good evening. Ed Forsberg, Precinct 7, part of the MBTA Steering Committee. I just wanna address a few things. Being on the committee, we did what was... What we were directed to do. We were told that we had to be within the half-mile radius of the train station. We had to have 50 acres, and we had to come up with 1,506 units. And this is what we did. We came up with the best plan. We tried to protect the Abutis with the outer core and the blue, where we only limited it to two stories. And like you were talking before, to encourage mixed use, we allowed an extra story for the downtown in the red area, the center core. Our zoning is, like Patrick said, is an overlay, and this overlay, the only real difference is that you can build without going for a special permit. You still have to abide by all of the existing zoning bylaws that are not in this, that are in our regular book. And you still have to go through the full site plan approval process. In most cases, I think this plan is more restrictive than what is allowed now. And, um, and we actually would have less density. Paul, to your point, why didn't we use the other land? Well, if I'm not mistaken, when we talked about this, that's industrial land, which you cannot build residence... Residential on there now. If we included that, you would be able to build a residential there. And if you were still allowed to do the building in our districts now, then you would have much more housing than what is, you know, would be proposed through this plan. Katie, I think you said about your property and the land...
I was just trying to get an idea of what the difference is.
Well, you know, it's hard to figure out. Like Patrick said, you have to calculate how much land you have and your open space, and then you almost back into how many, uh, how many units you would get. So I think, you know, with what we were given to work with, I think we have a very good plan here. And the beef really isn't with us or the, or the planning board or anybody else. Your beef is with your legislatures, because they are the ones who voted this in, and they threw it on our lap and said, this is what you have to do. So we just went by the rules that we were given, and this is what we ended up with. So I know you can nitpick on lots and here and there and all the way around, which we already did a lot of that. And I think we've protected the town and the Abutis as much as we could. And also, we're trying to keep the character of the town, which I think we also did. So I know, Jack, there's some language in there that could be a little more specific, but like, we really can't change it now, so I guess we would have to do any of that on a substitute motion.
Yeah.
At the town meeting.
Everything I told Patrick from... Everything I was mentioning to Patrick is what they think. If they don't think needed, but I don't wanna be sitting here, you say, hey, before, is you get in a wrestling match. What does this mean?
Right.
Let's do it right now. One and one is two, not mm.
I know, we get to the language, shall and may, right?
Yeah, and then you get lawyers, one and one. What do you want it to be? Three, four, five?
Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Pat, got a question while you're there, and I forgot to ask it, and I'll find it. It says, it says at all railroad stations, right?
So it's commuter rail?
Commuter.
Yeah.
Plingtonville?
Yeah, so this is a kind of a background conversation. So when the state was... So while we're designated commuter rail station, there is what's called your developable station area. So this is a term developed by the state. It's covered in the guidelines. It's essentially a transit station that falls within your town boundaries. We have the down... We have obviously the Walpole Station. Plingtonville was counted in terms of a option, and then Windsor Gardens and Norwood, a portion of that is within a half-mile radius of the town.
That's where it's going next. So as the state has said, Plingtonville, you don't have to do it?
So you only need one location. You don't need to utilize any transit station?
All right, and that answers the whole thing, okay. And Windsor Gardens, they can do what they want, but they stop at our line?
Yeah, I mean, it's...
They can't leak over to another town?
Oh, no, of course not.
Okay, so one per town, that's the answer. Thank you. Sir?
How we doing? Tom Deedle, 1 Spring Valley Drive. First, I'd like to thank you guys for doing a thankless job, all right? You guys are doing a good job. But like Mr. Forsberg said, I think we have a legislature problem, and I think you guys are in a neat, unique position to challenge the legislatures, okay? I don't think this is legal. I think there's probably case law out there that this is violating the Constitution. They're not allowed to... They are not allowed to... The MBTA is not allowed to dictate to the legislature what we can and cannot do. The legislatures, I think they were out of bounds by voting on this. There is case law in West Virginia where it's the EPA versus... West Virginia versus the EPA. And this went to all the way up to the Supreme Court, and it was ruled in West Virginia's favor, where they said, you cannot just have these un... These people are unelected. These MBTA people, they're not elected. They're appointed, and they're dictating policy now. It's not allowed. And I think that you guys are in a position to challenge it. Jump on with Milton. Hopefully, some other towns will jump on. And you would be in... I would love to debate you on this.
I have no position on this. I'm only explaining the law.
I don't... I don't think...
No position.
I don't think it's legal. I honestly don't, and I think we're in a unique, unique position. If that's the case, tell the MBTA to take the commuter rail out of here. Tell them, hey, we don't want it here.
I don't think the MBTA's doing it. It's just the legislature that did it. It's not nothing to do with the MBTA also.
Yeah, but they're going by the MBTA policy. Like, somebody's dictating this to the legislature.
No, the legislature...
Where did the policy come from?
It all came because Massachusetts does not have enough housing.
Yeah, but where did the policy come from? Who wrote the policy?
That's not politics. It's a fact.
Yeah, I know, but let's not get into the new housing we keep the hotels.
Who wrote the policy that the legislature's voted on?
Let's stay on track. Let's stay on track.
But... Well, who wrote the policy that the legislatures voted on?
Mr. Chairman, it was enacted, I may... It was enacted in... It was part of the Housing Choice Initiative. It was enacted in 2021 by Governor Baker and the legislatures, the legislators that were in office in 2021.
Which is pretty much the same crew.
I don't know.
So, sir, just so you understand, all we have is a recommendation. Our vote don't mean...
No, I totally get it, but it...
You gotta... If you really want this, you call your town meeting rep and say, vote no, vote no.
People gotta vote it down and kick it over, kick it, kick it to the legal department and let them fight it out.
Okay, I'm telling you... I'm telling you avenue. Town meeting has to vote yea or nay. So to me, if you don't like it, talk to your town meeting rep and say, vote it down.
Yeah.
All right, ma'am?
My name is Carol Davis, 21 Mallard Lane. I moved here hoping to find more space. I lived in Boston, and I moved here in June of 2019. And when I first moved in, the MBTA was great. Then in October of 19, they put up these signals and split the line between Walpole and Foxborough. So every other train that goes through that Walpole station does not stop at Walpole. It goes straight to Foxborough. So this whole thing about the MBTA stations really has got me. My hour to Bo... My commute to Boston is an hour and 20 minutes now. It wasn't when I first moved in here. And that's got me. Why the MBTA is such a big thing when they're dividing their time between Foxborough and, you know, you wanna put all this housing near MBTA. So that's where I am right now on this, you know, and I don't know. So I just... I just think, well, maybe they should offer better MBTA, so that's it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, all right. Since everybody's done, make a motion to close the hearing?
Second?
Your second. All in favor, close?
Aye.
No, I'm good. I'm good if you close. I was just... I just have a recommendation on what votes need to be taken, I may.
What do you mean? It's closed?
Right, so the votes that have to be taken tonight, there's a first vote that has to be taken whether the... Whether what's cross-hatched on the map is an eligible location. That's under the statute. And if it's an eligible location, you take a vote on whether it's an eligible location, and then you take a vote on the article itself.
Okay, would've been nice we knew that ahead of time. I mean, if you weren't here, we would've just voted once.
Well, luckily, I'm here, so...
I mean, it doesn't... Just typically, I mean...
It is... It's new. It's brand-new. It's brand-new, Mr. Chair, and it's part of... It's part of the statute. And so that's unfortunately why we have to do that. It's under 40. It's the... As you know, 40A, Section 5 changed to allow for certain things to be voted at town meeting by majority vote.
And this is one of them, I bet.
This is one of them.
Oh, of course it is. Every one, we wanna slide to where we go by majority. That's how the zoning is losing its effect.
Accessory dwelling units and mixed use, correct.
Yeah.
So because this is multifamily as of right, it is eligible for a majority vote. So the planning board, it states in the statute that the planning board has to determine whether it's in an eligible location or not. And so if I may...
What was interesting, when I went online, I got the little nibbit or whatever it was. Didn't say any of this. It was only like a paragraph long.
So, so tonight, just in that last paragraph that I stated, I actually... I actually talked about three separate sections of the statute. So it's 1A, 3A, and 5. So this eligible location is in... It's a definition in 1A, and it's cross-referenced in 5.
So we're gonna do two votes?
Two votes, please.
The map and the second. Town meeting gonna do... Town meeting gonna do two?
No. You're, it's, the statute states that the Planning Board determines if it's an eligible location.
So ours is not a recommendation?
Not a recommendation. You're just determining if it's an eligible location. Your second vote is whether it is a recommendation to town meeting.
Little different, as they say, cheese binding or something to that effect. All right. All right. Someone want to make a motion on the map?
So the eligible location, the vote, honestly, the motion could just be as easy as the Planning Board determines that the central core and, central core and outer core overlay districts are located in eligible locations.
I'll make that motion. The central core and the outer core are eligible locations.
All right. Do we have a second for that?
Would you like the definition of eligible location? Would that help?
Yeah.
Okay. So an eligible location is areas that by virtue of their infrastructure, transportation access, existing underutilized facilities or location making highly suitable locations for residential or mixed-use smart growth zoning districts or starter home zoning districts, including without limitation, one, areas near transit stations, including rapid transit, commuter rail, bus, and ferry terminals; or, two, areas of concentrated development, including town and city centers, other existing commercial districts in cities and towns, and existing rural village districts.
All right. We have a motion of second. All right. All in favor of the map, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
I abstain, too. I'm not gonna vote for something I don't know, it's just presented to me tonight. I don't know if it's good, bad, or indifferent, so.
Based on the facts.
All right. So what was it? 3-2? 3-0-2?
3-0-2.
Okay. All right. Make a motion for favorable action at town meeting. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Phil. All in favor, favorable action, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Abstain?
Aye.
Oh, there's another way to vote. 2-1-2. So, all right.
Thank you very much.
All right. Question for you. We're all out of here. If we said no, did that kill it for the map?
No. No, it's just part of the statute.
It's your third vote.
If everybody voted no, would that have killed the whole deal?
No.
Our vote don't mean anything, right?
It does.
Or it means we have, we showed we did it, but this wouldn't stop anything. That's what I wanted. Okay. Yeah. Recommendation, I would have been, that's a little different.
It's just another job the legislature gave you.
Yeah, it's in my check, everybody. As a deduct. All right. All right. Moving on. I'll let you get out of here, Patrick. We have a 7:15, I think. We've gone by it.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Yeah. Good, Phil, I'll be following in a minute. All right. I know everybody must be here for a preliminary plan, right? Wes, three minutes. Everybody get set up. Few people gotta go to the bathroom, so. Ready? All right. We're gonna resume for the Alabian after 7:15. We have a public hearing for site plan application from West End Residences, owner applicant eight Hancock Cor, Walpole, Mass. Plan B O I case 2403. We respect the property 130 and 130, and 20, 130 West and 25 Spring. Says properties assesses map 33 parcels, 399, 398, in the Central Business District. Applicant is seeking site plan review under Section 13 of zoning bylaw to allow the demolition of an existing building, construction mixed-use development with residential units on the upper floors. Site plan submission for West End dated December by Crossman Engineering. Not that at all. With that being said, the hearing is open, and the way the hearing will run is the applicant will get to speak and present to all of us, including the board, what's up. After that, I'll read all the comments from the different boards and anyone else who's written to us. They'll all be read into the record. And then the board members will get to have a say, and then all you people in the audience. In order to keep this rolling so no one's here, because chances of getting through this one night will never happen, is about 8:20, I'm sorry, 9:20. 10 minutes left. I'll get, I'll stop it so that the members of the audience, unless we get to a point we break earlier, but I want to make sure by 9:20, everyone out in the audience can have a say, so we're not going on until into the night, okay? With that being said.
Okay. Good afternoon, good afternoon. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Balduff, Mrs. Delaney. My name is Nadine Bailey. I'm with Mackey &amp; Mackey, 1256 Washington Street in Norwood, Massachusetts. I represent the owner applicant, West End Residences LLC. With me tonight is the development team, Ryan Lenhart, Leonardo da Silva, and Brendan Giblin. The civil engineer, Stephen Cabral, is here with us tonight. Traffic engineer, Elizabeth McChesney, back there. And architect Doug Anino with Anino Incorporated, and Christopher Cabral from Crossman Engineering. He's here. So I know that we're pressed for time, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go through the booklets that I passed out for you. I'm gonna go through those as quickly as possible. I'm just gonna give a brief summary of the locus background of the project and the present application, followed by how this project meets the site plan review criteria and general site development standards and guidelines that are included in Section 13 of the Walpole Zoning Bylaw, Site Plan Review. The relevant district is the Central Business District. The site plan, if you could go to AG, I'm sorry, Architect GO1, full review. Yeah. Right there. It falls entirely within the Central Business District or CBD. The project is a mixed-use building, and it meets the requirements to have residential units. And what that is means is that with a mixed project use like this, the dwelling units cannot be on the basement or first floor levels. They have to be on the upper levels, and they have to comply with being hooked up to town sewer during construction, at the time of construction. The thing with CBD, the residential units, there's another requirement in that the gross floor area within the CBD unit, the area for dwelling units above the ground floor, shall not exceed a gross floor area of 3.5 times the total gross floor area dedicated to the commercial use. In our situation, you can see down here, I brought this now, it doesn't work. Oh, no. Okay. So, doesn't work. So the calculations for whether or not we meet the gross floor area, we come in at 3.2. You take the 81,902 square feet for the residential use, and you divide that by the 25,617 for the retail, and that's 3.2. So we come under the 3.5 requirement. The, if you go to C3, the aerial map. The location of the project is the corner of West Street and Spring Street. The parcels are 398 and 399. 398 is Spring Street. I wish this thing worked.
Oh, here's Spring.
Yeah. That's Spring Street right there. So that's 398. That's parcel 398. And then 399 is West Street, the building right there. The whole project site is 1.87 acres. The streets surrounding, you have West Street at the north side, South Street at the east side, Clear Pond is at the south side, I'm sorry. North side is West Street. East side is Spring Street. Clear Pond Drive is south. And then you have an undeveloped area there to the west that surround the project, or the locus. The present use right now is two commercial buildings, one story. They're not in use at this present moment. The proposed construction is to construct a mixed-use commercial development with residential units on the upper floors, cover with driveways, parking spaces, stormwater management, and landscaping. If you go to page two of your memorandum, the memorandum, the booklets, the memo that's in the booklets, there's a zoning table there. And I took the liberty of copying it from the plans, and you'll see that the first column is the requirements for zoning, CBD, and the 6B1 of the table of dimensions. That's page 42 of the Walpole zoning bylaws. The first column right there is all the required requirements for what area, what frontage, et cetera. We meet all of those, and the project will comply with all applicable Walpole zoning bylaws. As I said before, the current applicant owner is West End Residences LLC, and the property is, if the approval for site plan review is granted, the, it will be binding on the land and run with the land. The, this is, we're still on page three. The, page three into page four, and page, up to page six, these are the applicability of the zoning bylaw, the site plan criteria, and then there's design standards and guidelines that are on page five. So if anybody in the board wants to check and see which ones I'm going through, you can either look at that or look at the, when I address site plan criteria, that's on page six. So the first criteria that we have to meet, and just so the audience knows, is there are certain criteria that a project has to meet under site plan rules and regulations. So the first set of requirements, I'm gonna go through a called site plan criteria, and they're under Section 139 point, 139 of the zoning bylaw. The, if you go to C3. I'm still on C3, yeah. The first criteria is consistency with the design and character of the surrounding area, such as but not limited to height, mass, setbacks, traditional building materials. The applicant submits that the proposed project is in harmony with the surrounding area. As the proposed development is a mixed-use design providing an elegant transition between the commercial area of the CBD and that extends to the east of the site, and the residential area that extends to the west. The design of the retail and residential spaces, including the height, mass, setbacks, and style, are consistent with the current character of the area and the other residential dwellings along West and Old West Streets. Can you just point to where those are? Yep, yep. The color scheme and layout of the proposed project is more aesthetically consistent with the surrounding neighborhood than the site's present use. Just to go into a little bit, if we go to C61 on the civil plan set, there's a ground level, and there's ground level parking, and it's only accessible from Spring Street. The ground level parking area is supposed to contain 122 spaces, 13 of which are uncovered. The driveway from Spring Street into the ground level is a full-axis driveway that passes under a port-cocher into a courtyard in the ground level parking. A port-cocher, if we could go to, which one is that on? A24? A24? The port-cocher is an opening in the building that is big enough to drive a car through. It's, I don't want to say it's an archway, but it's an entrance into the courtyard and parking. And it'll cause a big, an entranceway, but it's for, it's for motor vehicles. And see right there, and I can't, can you just point to it, Stephen? Yeah, right there. So, that's, that's the port-cocher. That's going to be the Spring Street driveway that goes into the ground level parking. And then you can see above the built, above the port-cocher is three levels of residential units. That's how it's going to be set up. The first floor level has outdoor parking and it's only accessible from West Street. That's a full-access driveway. Can you go to C62? That's, West Street's entrance is only for the first level parking. There'll be 71 uncovered spacings from that entranceway. The first floor is going to contain commercial space, and I want to back up, the ground floor is going to contain commercial space too. There's going to be 5,382 square feet of commercial space, and the first floor is going to have 20,235 feet of commercial space. And the expectation is that that'll be divided into eight retail spaces, but for both the ground floor and the first floor, the actual layout of tenant spaces is subject to change based on the actual tenant leases. The second through fourth levels of the building are going to be residential units. There's going to be a total of 95 one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and studio dwelling units, all of which have access to the outdoor living space on the roof deck, which is anticipated to be 1,300 to 1,400 square feet, and that will be located at the round corner of the building at the intersection of West and Spring. If you could go to A42. So, the roof deck would be at this rounded-up portion up here at the top. This is the intersection of Spring and West Street, and those would be residential units that wrap around the floor, from floors two to four. So, the next site plan review criteria is 1392, which is consistency with the general site development standards and guidelines of the bylaw. And the applicant submits that the general site development standards and guidelines are addressed on pages 10 to 13, Sections 5A through 5H of the memorandum in your booklet, and I will go over those shortly. The next section is 139A3, site plan review criteria, which is consistency with any sign or design guidelines, landscaping, and buffering requirements issued by the planning board. The applicant submits that the design is consistent with all signed design and landscape requirements. There's no proposed or anticipated signage for the project. Any signage that's proposed in the future will comply with all applicable rules and regulations and zoning bylaws. Should the board approve the site plan, any and all requested relief is granted. Applications will be to the building department in compliance with local requirements. There is, L1, L1, yep. With respect to landscaping and buffering, the parking garage structure, yeah, the parking garage structure is 26 feet from the property line that's bordering Clear Pond Drive. Just look at that. And it's 27 feet from the property line to the west. Therefore, the only available space to install the necessary drainage system, the irrigation, infiltration system, is within the 26-foot buffer. So, a waiver will be requested to allow the installation of a single row of evergreens in lieu of the 26-foot buffer. The next criteria is consistency with the Walpole master plan and with the most recent open space and recreation plan. The applicant submits that the project seeks to create a financial, functional, and aesthetically pleasing mixed-use design development along the western boundary of the CBD, which is consistent with the goals stated in the Walpole master plan. The project isn't identified under either open space or recreational sections of the Walpole master plan. Next criteria is 139A5, protection enhancement of important existing site features, natural and man-made. The site is a commercial property with two one-story buildings, like I said before, a shed that's in between both lots and walkways, concrete walkways and pavement for the parking areas, with a few overgrown landscaped sections. As such, there's no important man-made existing features on the site to protect or enhance. The, we've taken out a land disturbance permit that will ensure protection of the site during construction. Spring and West Street access will be maintained throughout construction, and the construction site will be physically separated by an appropriate barrier. The next criteria is called protection of adjoining premises against detrimental uses by provisions of surface water drainage, sound and light barriers, preservation of light and air, noise impacts, and preservation of views when possible at Section 139A6. The applicant submits that the drainage narrative and assessment for the West End, which is drafted by Crossman Engineering, submitted the application adequately counts for the protection of adjoining premises from surface water drainage. I know that this is a topic that is very interesting to the neighbors that live around the area. I will try to briefly summarize what the drainage system does, but Stephen Cabral will be able to address it a lot better and with more precision than I am. But briefly, all stormwater runoff that leaves the site at the present time ultimately drains in a northeasterly direction into the closed drainage system of West Street. Under pre-development conditions, stormwater runoff generated on-site and upstream of the site primarily discharges into, directly into Spring and West Streets with the Spring Street drainage connecting to West Street. There's no existing stormwater management system for the existing office facility, and therefore, all runoff is untreated before entering the town's drainage system. In the future, the conditions that we propose is that all runoff from the rooftop and parking areas will receive quality treatment in accordance with DEP guidelines, and then discharge into underground on-site infiltration systems. This system provides a significant decrease in the peak runoff flow rates and volumes discharging towards the town's existing drainage systems, and will be a significant improvement in water quality and mitigation and overall stormwater improvement that benefits the town's drainage system. With respect to the lighting plan, that's also been designed in accordance with town standards. The project will have no significant impact regarding light and air. The town surroundings include West Street to the north, Spring Street to the east, Clear Pond to the south, and that undeveloped tract that I pointed out before to the west, all of which reduce any potential impact for noise and light for neighbors in the area. And there are no sites, there are no sites to preserve at the locus as it presently is. The next section is 139A7, convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site, the location of driveway openings in relation to traffic and/or adjacent streets, and it references Section 138A7. The vehicular and pedestrian traffic flow within the, within and adjacent to the site has been designed for convenience and for safe movement. The walkways are ADA compliant. The vehicular entry into the new building is, like I said before, proposed through two driveways. There's the one from Spring Street, the one from West Street. Both driveways will be full-access driveways, and they're, and they're designed to minimize any impact to the road's traffic flow and allow for easy access for emergency vehicles. The traffic impacts, the traffic impacts from the project are minimal, and they're more detailed explained in the traffic impact study that was drafted by Crossman Engineering. Section 139A is the next, 139A8 is the next site plan review criteria, is adequacy and arrangement of parking and loading spaces and the ability of the site plan to accommodate parking in areas other than the front of the building. With the total parking spaces of 193 spaces, including six for handicap access, the, we propose that it's adequate to prevent parking in the front of the building and on the street of the proposed mixed-use development. Next section, 139A9, consistency with all applicable dimensional regulations of the zoning bylaw. The applicant submits that the, as shown on the plan that's submitted with the application, the project conforms to all dimensional requirements. The next section is, these are the standards and guidelines that are addressed, this is on page 10 of 13, and the first guideline is conserve and protect natural features that are of the same lasting benefit to the site and surrounding area and the town at large. There's no wetlands or natural features on the site that are of any lasting benefit to the site, the surrounding area, or the town. Next criteria or guidelines, excuse me, is protect slopes in excess of 15% against erosion, runoff, and unstable soil, trees, and rocks. Appropriate measures shall be taken to stabilize the land surface from unnecessary disruption. Stabilization measures shall be the responsibility of the property owner. There are two areas on site that exceed the 15% slope and that measures intended to stabilize the land surfaces at the time of the construction are, have been enacted to prevent unnecessary disruption and to protect against erosion, runoff, and unstable soil, trees, or rocks, which is more detailed in the drainage narrative and assessment for the West End, and is also detailed in the long-term operations and maintenance plan, both of which were crafted by Crossman Engineering. Next guideline is Section 1310A, building structures, fences, lighting, and fixtures on each site shall be placed so as to not interfere with traffic circulation, safety, appropriate use, and enjoyment of adjacent properties. The building, lighting, and other fixtures of the property, the project are proposed in such locations that, with such designs, as to protect from traffic circulation and avoid interference with the use and enjoyment of adjacent properties. Section 1310A is the next guideline, all roadway and driveway design shall take into consideration safe site distances of intersections and along all traveled ways in accordance with appropriate AES/HTO requirements. As much as possible, clear site distances shall take into account topography density of dwelling units or intensity of use in horizontal and vertical alignment. And to save time, there has been a traffic impact study by Crossman Engineering, and we have the traffic engineer with us tonight who can address any questions that anybody might have regarding that guideline. Section 1310A5 is, addresses providing adequate illumination of parking lots and other areas for vehicular and pedestrian circulation. In a residential district, no freestanding illumination device shall be installed at a height exceeding 15 feet. All illumination shall be directed and shielded so as not to shine beyond the perimeter of the site or interfere with traffic. The, there's a site, the site lighting plan that's been submitted with the application at E1, and it provides, it shows that all illumination is directed or shielded from the neighborhood and eliminates illumination beyond the perimeter of the site to avoid interfering with traffic. And then again, you also have the fact that, I mean, the streets, West and Spring are there, but you have property to the south and to the west where it wouldn't impact at all, but they're, the lighting is directed, so it doesn't impact any of the surrounding area. The next section is 1310A7, all utility service transmission systems, including, not limited to water, sewer, natural gas, electrical, and telephone lines, shall whenever practical be placed underground. All utilities are underground on this project. Section 13108 is all surface water runoff from structures and impervious surfaces shall be managed in accordance with Subsection 11 Drainage Standards. We submit that all surface water runoff from structures and impervious surfaces is managed in accordance with Section 11 Drainage Standards, and the details of that can be found in the drainage narrative and assessment for West End that was drafted by Crossman Engineering. So, in conclusion, we hope the board votes to approve, to allow us to demolition of the existing buildings and construction of a mixed-use commercial development with residential units on upper floors, coupled with driveways, parking spaces, stormwater management, and landscaping, all as shown on the plan that was submitted with the application. We have 20, 15 minutes, less than 15 minutes, and I will turn it over to, I think Doug Anino is going to be going next with, he's the architect on the project.
We're going to have less than that because we haven't had this to read.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman?
We still got to do our stuff.
So, what do you, yeah.
So, if you do want to do a quick architecture, we're not going to be able to do traffic tonight and that stuff.
Okay.
Do you want to give a quick overview?
Yeah, I'll do it. I'll keep it short and sweet.
Doug Anino from Anino Associates, North Attleboro. Good evening, everyone. I'll keep this short and sweet, but Nadine has sort of explained all my architectural issues, so I'll just stick with aesthetic issues. So, at the intersection of West and Spring, we have about a 12-foot rise from, from the front of the site to the back of the site, and from that intersection to this property line on West Street. So, that gives us the opportunity to bury some of the parking, which is great. So, what we did was we set up the building on the perimeter, and we have an entrance on Spring Street to get to underground parking, which is partially open in the middle, which gives us the majority of the parking spaces. And then on the second deck, we'd have an entrance from West Street to the rest of the parking. This gives us a further opportunity to develop that corner. It's a prominent corner. It's a great place to, to create a pedestrian amenity for not only us, but the citizens So, at the, at the intersection, we have the opportunity to create this plaza, which fronts on some retail, hopefully cafe, restaurant space on the first level of the building. So, these, these doors and all the glass front that plaza. The plaza is enhanced by, by pavers, brick paving, granite accent features, benches, some trees, some shade trees, flagpole, and bollards, sort of outlining the perimeter of our property line. So, the effort was to, to create a gateway, a nice welcoming corner to invite people into, into our development. Retail, as Nadine said, is, is partially on this floor and on the, on the next, next Which, again, West Street and Spring Street, so on the second level, we come up, two stairways are, and an elevator to get to this level. We have an exterior promenade that walks along the retail spaces on both sides of the building. So, in essence, we have a first level that's mostly submerged, that incorporates mostly parking and some retail. We have a second deck that has some parking, which is also retail, and then three floors above, which feature residential, and hopefully a roof deck on the, the top floor so we can bring people up and have an outside amenity for them up there. I think, Mr. Chairman, you mentioned podium construction, but it's probably how we do this. We do the, the first deck out of concrete and steel. There goes my easel.
You're not doing this, are you? You're not out there with a hammer, are you?
That's how I learned. Believe it or not. Still have my fingers. So, this level... So this level, from here up, we'd like to do out of wood, but the first deck will be steel and concrete. Keeping natural materials, brick base that wraps around the whole building, mixture of hardy plank and hardy panel on, on the upper stories. Break it up with towers and gables and balconies so that there's some diversity to the elevations. They're not flat facades. They jog in and out. There's some sloped roofs. There's some metal roofs. So a variety of different textures and colors just to enhance the, the total project. The flagpole, the bollards, and the central, the corner plaza out in front of it. And before I break anything else, I will retire. Thank you.
Thank you. We're doing overviews later on, the next hearing, probably get more of the details. I'll read the comments from any board or committee or anybody. First is from the Board of Health on March twentieth. And from, and on their meeting March nineteenth, they unanimously voted that both the trash and recycling containers be provided in accordance with Mass DEP, and they would like the applicant to be mindful of public safety, do the highly populated area, and encourage the applicant to work with the engineering department as well as the police to ensure they're doing all the required safety crosswalk, street lighting, and additional precautionary measures. So that's from Board of Health. From Board of Water and Sewer, dated February twenty ninth. They request the applicant come in, explain the plan, and get comments from the engineering department so we know about the changes. That's February twenty sixth. You guys got something going with them? You already been there?
Yes, well, we, we showed up, but put up that.
They didn't inform. They didn't inform. We're going back Monday.
Oh, okay. The, I didn't, it doesn't make sense what changes. Do they think compared to the last one? Is that where their heads are?
I believe so.
It's not even the same plan, but anyway. Let's see. Who else do I got? I hit them. I hit them. I'll let Kyle go. From the fire department, Alan Hoover, deputy chief. And he sent this on March twenty eighth. The proposed hydrant layout is inadequate for firefighting operations. Please add additional hydrants. We recommend installing as part of the loop water system. Hydrant closest to the sprinkler riser room is acceptable in its current location. They're looking for the key boxes, which they always require, but it's not part of us, but you guys know, you're going to have to do it later. Wants to know the height of the pour, pour-to-share, whatever you want to call that. They want thirteen six. Is that an issue?
We have twenty feet.
You have twenty feet to go under there? Wow. Well, tell me, keep the ladder down. So you're all set there. Have you guys been to see the fire department yet? Oh, okay. It's, there must be something no one ever wants to go see them, and we always run into this if there's any other things. You got to mark fire lanes. The race parking structure does not offer accommodations to turn around, and they want a design for live load to carry their apparatus. I, I don't know. My own, is that a requirement in the Mass Building Codes? Because I build these, but I'm not sure.
To turn around?
No, to support a fire truck.
You need access to two sides of the building.
All right, well, you're going to have to wrestle with them that because all the parking garages I've built, it's for cars only. Now they're even getting worried about Teslas being too heavy. But, and that will talk about the turnaround too. Traffic calming, calming devices like speed bumps. And he attached his power truck, which be about four-foot-thick slab fire. Kyle has his comments, and his are dated yesterday, so I'll let Kyle do his.
Mr. Chair, I delivered comments to the board dated April third. In my review memo, it has several components, but I started with the application, and I noticed, I noted a few things about administrative things and that the fiscal impact and assessment in the DIS was fairly weak. We also noted the drainage narrative and assessment. We reviewed that preliminarily with the Conservation Commission. We sent them a memo dated March thirteenth. That is also attached to the memo. Prime concern there is the proximity of the stormwater infiltration to the building and the fact that the bottom of the systems is somewhere near or above the garage floor. We're concerned about a number of things there, including whether that will need an underdrain. I have not talked to the designers about that, but I expect we will. We've noted the stormwater pollution prevention plan, long-term operation plan, will be reviewed by the Conservation Commission. This is an important one, the traffic impact study here. This is a ninety-five unit project. It's close to downtown and all kinds of things, so I'm recommending peer review. I've attached a proposal for peer review by the town's consultant, Bowman. They've invested considerable time and the town's money in understanding that whole downtown area, and I think they've provided a fair proposal to do that. I would like the board to vote that tonight so that we can get the funds and start that process moving. Sewer and water, I didn't know when the applicant was going to go to, I thought they were going to go to an earlier meeting, so I did a quick email to them, I think on March first. I've attached that. There's nothing earth-shattering in that. There's a few technical items and things that we want to go over and that, but that's fairly, it's a little bit unusual, but it's underground parking, and the drainage goes into floor drains that will be connected to the wastewater system naturally because it's covered. No uncovered drainage will go into it because its covered flows will be minimal. But anyway, we have a few comments on that and on the layout of the water system. Town prefers fire and domestic services to be in separate piping. That's a fairly simple memo, but that's also attached. I'm not going to dwell. The plan review is fairly, fairly short. The designer has been here before. We've gone through things. So, you know, we've got some technical comments as we always do. I'm going to slide by most of those, and I expect we'll be able to also discuss those. As a matter of fact, before the designers come back in with any revisions, I certainly want to talk with them about some of the things. One of the bigger topics in that is how the walkways go in the plaza. There's a relocation of the corner of spring street shown on the plans. I don't like it. I don't think it's necessary, and I think there needs to be some clarification with that. And maybe, and we'll see what happens after that. That will be a topic of discussion as well. And that's it. If the board has any questions, I know you just got this, so I'd be glad to field them.
All right, so you need Bowman to do peer review, correct?
Correct.
All right. Anybody have any issues with that?
No.
No, it's, okay. We take cash? You got cash on you tonight? All right, all right, all right. Yeah, so the, all right, how long, I didn't read, how long did it take, Kyle, once we engage him, do you say?
I'll have to look at the proposal. I'm not familiar with that. Let me take a quick look.
Oh, no, he's prepared to start work on it and submit a draft within three weeks.
There you go. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so I'll make a motion to engage Bowman Associates in the amount of eighty-three hundred to do all the peer review for this?
Second.
We have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so, all right. We'll send that along, Kyle, and away we go.
Yeah, we need a check out of the applicant. We'll turn it over, and then we can sign the agreement.
Well, you tell them when it's going to be, as soon as we get that, okay? All right. And within a month if you get the check. Sounds like a little quick. Okay, you all set? I'll start from the left this time. To my left, Paul, anything?
I'm going to refer to Katie. Yeah, I'm, I'm going to refer to Katie.
He's skipping.
I'm skipping. I'm just skipping because she has some points that would be mine, but.
He's been reading my notes.
He's chickenin' out.
I'm not chicken, no, 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 no.
All right, so I don't want to talk too long, but... So Planning Board strictly bound by the rules and regs. You know, it's not a subjective board. Our opinion means little, but I'm struggling with this one a lot. I think it's way too much. I think it's way too much for the area. I don't think we need another big, huge building like that downtown. I think it's too close to the other two. I, you know, I just, it's not sitting well with me. So I pulled out the zoning book and tried to find something. And if you look under the purpose of the zoning book, it says, "The purpose and objectives of this zoning bylaw shall include the promotion of public health, safety, morals, or general welfare, including all of the stated objectives of the zoning act as amended, including to lessen congestion in the streets, to conserve health, to secure safety from fire, flood, panic, congestion, confusion, and other dangers, to provide adequate light and air, to prevent overcrowding of land, to avoid other dangers, to avoid undue concentration of population, to encourage housing for persons of all income levels, to facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water, water supply, drainage, sewerage, et cetera." So there are a few things that jumped out at me there, obviously. The purpose and objective are to lessen congestion. I don't think this does that. To prevent overcrowding of land, I don't think this does that. To avoid undue concentration of population, it certainly doesn't do that. Adequate provisions of water and water supply, I'll leave that up to the experts. And just the overall well-being of the town. I don't think it does that. And, you know, then I went on to page ninety-five, where it's design and standards and guidelines for the central business district. And under the purposes, it says, "In the CBD district, the following architectural standards and guidelines are provided to encourage building and site design that enhance and strengthen the downtown Walpole District community character as traditional New England." I don't think this does that. So I'm struggling a lot with the project, and I'm not going to get into the nitty-gritty of the plans right now, but I, I do think there's some issues. That's all I've got.
That's it? Want me to keep over this one, Paul?
Well, I mean, you know, it just kind of goes to what I said earlier. I just, you know, it's, I guess it's more personal opinion, and I can't, I can't say that as a planning board member, but it's, you know, I mean, Katie's points, when I saw them, she, she talks fact, so, yes, you can go to the right.
Okay. Phil?
It looks like you're asking for one waiver, so that, you should put the waivers on the cover sheet, what waivers you're asking for.
I have a lot of questions about the parking in the parking garage. So, excuse me. So, this is on sheet C six dot one and C six dot two. One, could you just show the, the circulation and how cars are driving around? It took a while to figure out the two decks, so that's, so there's no, there's really parking under the, the west, the west street part. There's also parking underneath it that gets out on spring street, it looks like.
Yes.
Yeah.
So this is the lower-level parking. It's accessed off of spring street through the port cochee here, which is, like we said, twenty foot high, twenty-six feet wide. So you come in here and you can circulate around and go back out with our, your standard regulations, aisles and parking spaces. So that, that's how that one works. If you go to the next one. So this is the second deck, which this portion is over the first deck, lower level deck. It's accessed off west street. This is the buffer, the twenty-six foot buffer. It's accessed off west street. You come around and then go back out. This is all open to blow. So this is open air, and these are tandem spots in here that are serviced by that aisle.
So it would be good if you showed arrows, I think, on how the circulation is on the, on the two, two decks. It wasn't clear. So I have, I have a lot of questions, though, so. Where would the loading area be? You know, so in other words, you, you know, you mentioned, you know, on, you know, thirteen dot nine dot A, section, you know, subsection eight. But where, where would the loading be? I know, I know in my experience of being at other apartment buildings in town, loading seems to be a big problem. So if somebody was moving in, where would they park? How would they get, or if somebody was dropping off a, a delivery, you know, which we know there's a lot of deliveries done these days.
There's, you come in the port cochee chair, and over here is like a, a long, wide spot for delivery trucks.
I, I think that needs to be marked, and if that's, you know, is that going to be reserved for delivery trucks? How would people know to go there?
Yeah, we can, we can put a, to not park there in that area.
It just seemed, you know, it seems very crowded. Let me just say that. The, the parking is very, looks very tight. Where would, where would the, the people who go to the retail stores park?
There's really no requirement in the downtown zone for parking retail.
Yeah. Of course, usually in, in the center, you know, usually downtown main street, there's parking on the streets. There's really no parking on the streets around there.
Speaking as a developer, but I imagine there's got to be shared parking there. It's not going to be reached here.
So, so we'd need signage at least to know where people would go.
Right.
I know one, one thing that the health department asked is on, on the trash, that there'd be a place for recyclable, recyclable bin.
Yeah, we have a trash, central trash area over in here.
So then, is that, now is that on the same level with the parking? Or is it below it?
On the same level as the lower parking. Which is, this is all open too.
And I noticed that's where you would put the snow. Has it been, any calculations? Is that enough space for snow? And I know on the, on the top deck, the snow would be put.
I'm Steve Cabal with Crossman Engineering. So I know you're getting into a lot of things that we didn't get a chance to present yet. But basically, because space is limited, we have a fringe of snow storage on the outer side of the parking deck in a very small area in the lower level. So the understanding is that we're obligated to haul the snow away for large events.
I think that needs to be a note in the plan. I don't know. I didn't see it anywhere.
Okay.
That you would, you know, you would remove snow if.
Yes, it was in one of the documents. We can certainly add it to the plan.
Yeah, I think it has to be on the plan some, somewhere. So, and then as far as any, any other space, so the space for the residents, it sounds like would be on the rooftop in that space?
There's, in this, this corner area, right? Adjacent to the public plaza, we have an outside deck and outside amenity. And then on the second level in the lobby, it hasn't been broken up yet, so you fit this area and allows residents.
And do you allow dogs in the, in the apartments? You do, right? Yeah, 'cause I know that, that comes up a lot of where do dog, dog owners bring their dogs. You know, it, it's important once the project's done. You know, we hear, we hear comments from people on that.
If you go back down, yeah. Dogs are always a problem cleaning up after us, but we do have a large area.
And then definitely we want to see the traffic study, and it wasn't clear to me on the pedestrian, you know, walking around in the parking garage. There might be something, we don't want, I don't want to take all the time right now, but that, I've never heard questions about that, showing how from the handicap space, people get to the different, the different doors, if they're going to retail, if they're going to the apartment building. And there's only one elevator, right? And that's, yeah, I didn't know there's no requirement for more, just, just to know.
Yeah, typically in units under a hundred, we only usually put one.
One, okay, yeah. Yeah, that, I don't think that's in our purview, but just noting it, yeah.
Yeah, that, I don't think that's in our purview, but just noting it, yeah. Particularly, I think, so, so parking and how people drive up, you know, to, to drop off something, 'cause I, again, I've been to some of other apartment buildings, and that's, that can be a real problem of, so, um, and then I had a question on the landscaping plan. Um, I don't know whether we consider that a deck, but, but when there's more than fifteen spaces, we require a landscaping on one end or the other. Um, and that's in, that's in section eight dot B dot three. Um, so it's fifteen, more than fifteen spaces. So, there's twenty, and then there's eight, um, in a row there.
Down here and here.
Yeah, so I know, I know that's on top of, of the garage below it, so, so I think that's something we might want to under, you know, explore a little bit. I, I would defer maybe to Carl or to our building commissioner on if that's considered a deck or a open parking space.
Conforming with section eight, the is in my comments.
Is what?
It's in my comments.
It's in you, okay, good. Oh, thank you. Yeah, thank you, Carl. Yeah. I missed, I missed that, sorry.
They have to be raised planners on that, for a deck.
Yeah.
Pretty important.
Okay, I, I, I think we should move on, 'cause I know we want to get to, to people's comments, but there are a number of other things I had too, um, and...
Okay, John?
I'll have to bring them up.
Okay. Well, we're on the same page, 'cause I have some questions on it too. Um, I guess if I understand it correctly, the lowest level is accessed from Spring Street, the parking?
Yes.
Okay. And that has...
This is two-way access into the site. You can take a right, you can go under this section of the building, or you can go through here, or you can go under this section.
Okay, so there's underground, under the building, under the building. Uh, the far west side there, that is also parking below the above parking, is that correct?
Yeah, the above parking deck goes to this point. So, there's the same configuration up top.
Okay, so we have a great deal. And there's no connection between the upper level and the lower level?
No.
What is the slope of the ramp going up to the upper level?
This is almost not great because of the slope of the street.
Is it?
Pretty close.
Um, I'd like to echo Phil's comment. If you've got retail spa, this many retail spaces as you're showing here, they need a place to unload their merchandise. Um, the one spot you showed, I think, is that's right in front of the dumpster. That's hardly going to be useful.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it, it's really a double spot or a, a bigger truck spot, and the elevator's right here, making little stuff of it.
I'm sorry, where was the elevator? I missed. Right there.
And if you go to a lot of other apartment buildings, you see like, uh, you know, whether it be Prime or whatever, they're, they're pulling up all the time, parking lots, and there's no space to park on Spring or West Street for that.
Um, okay, the elevator, there's one elevator, it's located by the lobby area, okay. Is there a connection on what's called the upper level between the northern lot buildings and the eastern buildings?
On the second level?
On, yeah, on the...
No. There's no connection on the second level.
So, how would deliveries be made to the Spring Street buildings? Retail space then?
They would have to bring them up the stairs.
Okay, there go all your tenants. Um, let's see what else we've got here. Underground parking lots, okay. On page two, the proposal or the explanation, there's one figure for existing and one for proposed total square feet. Can you explain what that difference is?
Over the lot area.
Yeah, check section five, or page, page two, number five.
Yes, you're asking why is the proposed lot area a little bit less?
Yes.
Yes, and that goes to one of the comments that Carl had, that we're going to address.
The rounding at the street or something?
Yeah. Currently, the property line extends further away from the building. We were pulling in, we were flattening the curve at the intersection so that we have a twenty-five foot set back at the corner.
So, were you giving up that land?
Yes, we were going to give that land up in merger with the way to plenty, but we don't need to, if the town...
Okay, I'm just curious what it was for. Okay, that explains. Okay, some other notes in there. Okay, uh, page seven of the pro, proposal, the waiver, um, the, the map is showing the twenty-six foot buffer on the plan. Um, were you going to be putting these evergreens within that twenty-six buffer by keeping it there? Uh, or are you saying you want to do away with the twenty-six foot buffer and just put a line of evergreens there?
We consist in evergreen screen, the buffer, the property. And that evergreen screen will extend from west all the way around to spring. So, back to your question, the evergreens will be in the twenty-six feet.
Okay. Uh, which map do I need? This one. Okay, um, looking at this set here. A three one, towards the back. Building section, I believe it's called. Yeah, I believe that looks like it. Um, I don't know if the bigger plans are any better. I'm looking at heights for the floors of ten feet four for the tops, the three residential decks, four point four for the top, and I can't quite make out the, let's see. The upper parking level is ten point four, and the bottom one, I can't make out what that height is supposed to be. That one right there, yeah.
That's twelve.
Twelve, okay.
That's four.
Now, so, my math's generally pretty good. Uh, that adds up to a lot more than fifty-one feet.
Right. This, this is from this deck, but remember, we're built into the hill, so our average grade plane is above that.
Okay.
When we calculate the, the height from your average grade.
Correct. Okay. Uh, what's the other one, the floor planes?
All those.
Uh, there we go. Oof, oh, come on, where are you? Okay. So, one, two, three, four, five of the third floor units have an upper level to them.
Like a townhouse unit? Yeah. They have a level built into that roof, so...
Is that encompassed within that four point four feet? Isn't that going to raise it even higher?
If you're not taking where those are, but yeah, that would be a little higher than that.
Yeah, so your overall height is not fifty-one, it's fifty-one plus another ten?
No, probably four to six feet more. I can do a section.
Can you do a section calculations on how it is the zoning?
And I can give you the overall.
I'd like that, yeah. Stairs, elevator. Stairs, stairs, okay. I guess that's it for me then, Jack.
All right. All right, um, I got one for now. Uh, it's in Area Two, resource.
Yeah.
You're gonna have to get a special permit, this is meeting, ba, 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 ba.
Is it in Area Two?
No, there's no special permit in it. We're, we're not in it, I'm sorry, we're, we're, the property line borders, um, on the west.
I was looking here, and, all right. What's on blind, looking here, and three is towards Clear Pond, two comes down, looking all around. Here. On sheet C two.
C two.
It's, it's, keep going down, it's the colored one. There we go.
That one.
Uh, yeah. Doesn't that say Area Two to the top, which is site?
Um, if I may, the, 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 Area Two is actually on the inside, that's just the border to the district. So, Area Two is actually outside of the lot. So, we can move that wording over here to make it clear, but you can see over here, there's Area Two and Area Three.
Yeah, I know, and that's, that's why I asked, because it's, you have it on that side of the fence, and it's like...
But it's meant to designate that this is the limit of it.
Okay.
But it's definitely not on this side.
All right, so, homework, move it on the other side, please. All right, I'm not going to belabor anything else, uh, 'cause it's time for all the people here, we have questions, comments, and if you come up to the podium, name and address and your question, and we'll see what the, what it is and who can answer.
Lucy McNamara, sixteen Clear Pond Drive. Thank you for everybody that's made the presentation so far. Um, concerns, one is noise. Um, some of the development of Highlands West, which is part of the Swan Pond Consortium, is an eighth of a mile from this construction area. There isn't really a border of woods or anything else between the construction area and that part of Mallard. So, I'm wondering, in that case, do you require certain hours that construction can occur, and outside those hours, construction is not to be done, such as eight to four or nine to five?
Typically, the town, I don't know if it's seven or eight.
It's between, uh, eight, eight, eight P M. and seven A M. You can't do construction.
You can.
Okay.
Oh.
You can't have noise, you can't have noise, it's a noise thing.
Yeah, but you can, they, okay.
I think the eight P M. is kind of generous.
Well, we don't set those anyway.
It's a, it's a town bylaw.
It's, I think it's...
So, that would have to be brought up to the town meeting.
Oh, the town, well, the selectmen, 'cause they're gonna have to go see them anyway for sidewalks.
Okay, so that's for selectmen. Next part is...
Someone in the, in the group, you're gonna have to go see selectmen for sidewalks?
Well, I'm just making a list, so...
No, I, I'm trying to get the applicants to get, to get a yea or nay. Can someone answer that?
Yes, yes.
You're going, okay. So, at that point, that's what will be brought up, 'cause they, we, we don't do the, that's town bylaws.
So, would that fall under the noise bylaw?
Okay.
Yeah, would follow the, whatever, they do have their hours operation, I think it's even less, Phil, Saturdays and Sundays.
Okay, the next question is in demolition, because these are older buildings, the possibility of asbestos or other hazardous dust. What type of protection is for our area to not have that hazardous dust come our way?
First, well, I'll make statement, it doesn't involve us. Second, it comes through the building inspector. Third, they have to do a, a study and find out if there's any asbestos in the building, and if they do, they have to have a whole plan, and then the plan has to be submitted to the town building inspector, and they have to remove it if there is asbestos found. That comes at the time of the demolition permit, so they gotta give to them exactly what's in there. You have to list anything, including asbestos, where it is, and how they're gonna mitigate it. So, that's down the road, it's not related to us, but it will have to be done by the applicant when they do the, apply for demo permit, building permit.
Um, I thought it was very good of the board to talk about parking of delivery trucks, since I live near Union and West and see all the delivery trucks on West Street, and also how the pedestrians don't necessarily use the alert lights when they're crossing West Street, and also how people barrel through there at thirty to forty miles an hour where it's a twenty-five mile per hour zone. Um, Swan Pond has significant pedestrian traffic, and I'm concerned about this development and how it affects the pedestrian traffic in Swan Pond. Swan Pond also does not have public roads, it's private ways. If people aren't able to park in the wonderful hundred ninety-three parking spaces, I fear that they will just turn down Clear Pond Drive and park there. I'm also concerned, who do we talk to about dogs? Swan Pond has a lot of dogs, but it's a private way. Are we going to have the residents of this particular development bringing their animals into Swan Pond area, where we already have a problem with people picking up the remains of their pets? And who do we address that to?
Board of Health.
Board of Health.
I think we went down this road before, when they had it in here, and maybe the, I think somebody says, "Why don't you put stickers on the car?", and that, that kind of got rebuffed by the group. I don't know why you wouldn't have resident stickers.
So, are you guys also in charge of traffic?
No. No, we just make sure you can get in and out. So, when you pull it out, you gotta make sure you got it clear, but we can't control how many cars or anything like that. We make sure you have clear sight distances and all that, so that you're not coming out of a blind curve or blind spot.
Okay, so who would be the group to talk about traffic lights or other things?
Well, that would come out during the peer review for our, uh, traffic study, if it's needed.
Okay. Thank you so much for your kind indulgence.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, everyone. Oop, this moves. My name is Mia Harkins, I live on Mallard Lane. Um, I do have some concerns, um, that I wanted to bring up, and some of them were already brought up. My biggest one is car traffic and the amount of parking, which we've discussed at length already. Uh, we've discussed delivery vehicles, um, for the retail, where people will park. My biggest thought is, with the number of people living there, and then the limited amount of parking spots, what happens when people have guests over? Where are their guests gonna park? 'Cause that is a huge thing. The only areas where they really could park are the overflow areas for the MBTA, and then here on Clear Pond, we have a little area where we, you know, park when there's snow so that people can plow. That isn't really acceptable, and I think that should be noted. Um, another one was, I know we talked about water. Um, if that fails, you know, we have ponds, obviously. What happens if those start to overflow, if the water systems, you know, kind of fail somehow? I'm not a big expert on that, you, I mean, I'm sure you know more. You're the engineer. Um, I think that's important. Sorry, I have a lot of thoughts, but I know it's pretty...
The water on their site?
Yeah.
Well, that's down from you, 'cause you guys will never feel it, you have to go uphill.
That is true.
I think I, I'd be worried for them, for something coming out of Swan Pond, right?
That's true. And then I guess the last thing I will bring up is where, um, Spring Street meets Clear View. My fear is that there will be kind of like a blockage of like line of sight when pulling out, and that could possibly cause issues with traffic and possible collisions.
That's the consultant we're hiring, he's gonna do peer reviews... That's the consultant we're hiring, he's gonna do peer review of what their traffic engineer come up, and make their recommendations like that. Other things, I don't know if you were here the last time when this, we had in front of us, but you guys, uh, private road, you can have them towed, you can do whatever you want.
That is true. Yeah. Um, yeah, those are my main thoughts, I just wanted to bring them up, um, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Karen Ludwig, um, Morgana Way, part of Swan Pond. I'm more interested in the construction airtime, particularly because, as you all know, there's a trestle that number of trucks have been, uh, had their roofs taken off. And we're going to have huge amount of demolition, uh, huge trucks coming up and down, going, they can't get under West either way, and coming down Spring Street, that's, gets very narrow in several places, there's a lot of little kids and stuff along there, and it's very dangerous. That's one of my big worries, and the way the people drive on that street. Little, and that's just the whole, when the whole construction starts.
Okay, I believe the trailer dumps fit under the bridge. The ones that don't, uh, concrete trucks, 'cause they're thirteen-six, most of the trailer dumps are eleven. So, they were, that's what you only deal with. The only time I think they would have a hard time is if they haul in a big excavator on the back, and they'll go down Spring Street. So, I think the amount that would have to go on that would be kinda limited, but as you know, living there, West Sand has been there forever, their trailer dumps can go through there. But I think Rosenfeld's learned that they don't fit under the bridge down by you guys, though they, they...
But certain people still end up...
I know, that's, I know, they, yeah.
And you just kind of like, okay, that guy's, and you find a lot of trucks stopped at Union and West who have suddenly realized, oh, I can't get underneath that, and then they're trying to find the way around again. And I've stopped and talked to a couple of truckers and said, okay, you go out, back out this way and come around Spring Street. But even that's hard.
Oh, yeah, no, I understand. So, as far as the actual construction, you mostly use the dump trucks, so that's a little bit lower, so they'll continue on West Street. Anything, anything big, I guess, would have to go down Spring, that the way they go, Kyle?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And getting in and around Spring and the traffic on that, that's gonna make, that's gonna be horrendous with all the construction traffic back and forth. The other thing during that time of construction, where are all the construction guys gonna be parking? Again, we've got Clear Pond. That's a private way, we don't want them there. Um, there's no room for them, the, so where are they gonna park? Are they gonna use the MBTA parking?
They get paid.
Well, that's, hopefully.
Well, they, they don't get a choice, or they'll get towed or something to that effect, but, no, I understand what you're saying. One of the things is, we've had, we wanted to do a moratorium on some of this stuff a while back, and everybody said, no, no, then we hit COVID, and we still haven't gone back. Once we hit a hundred percent of people going back to work, that's when all this stuff is really gonna hit the fan, all the people, 'cause I, I, you see the trains, they're what, half full, maybe? There's no, you know, remember the days when you had to park anywhere, now, you go in any lot you want. That's, that may come, but construction workers, yeah, no, I understand. But that did make a great lot when they're building that West Street office building, I mean, that apartment, didn't it?
Oh, yeah. The other thing on your parking garage, the one that was the two-level outside, and there's no way of getting around from the level, the bottom level up to the top level? Uh, I don't think your, people that were gonna be renting are gonna be very happy with that. That's, I mean, that's not gonna be convenient, and only one elevator for that amount of people, and that big a building, and it's only one spot, and you can't get from one to the other? Uh-uh, not gonna work. Particularly when you've got elderly like me moving in, and I don't like doing stairs, so.
Okay.
Um, my name's Megan Farrington, I'm at one sixty-two West Street, so I'm the direct butter, right next door. Um, so I was in kind of communication a lot with Ryan and his wife, but for the original plan, there are a lot of things, this is directed to you, there are a lot of things that you had mentioned that were beneficial about that original plan, so it was, um, buyers and not renters, it wasn't a huge multi-story complex with a massive double-decker lot. Um, and, you know, you had mentioned you never could have lived in Walthall, and that this is something that you didn't wanna do, 'cause it wasn't what was best for the town. So, I'm just wondering what has changed from that point that you think that this is now what's best for the town?
Sure, it's, uh, it's under different ownership, although I am part of it, I was business assistant.
Yeah, and so, we were in contact so much before, we've emailed multiple times, we haven't heard that, and so now it's a, you know, huge impact on my own, so.
Okay. Uh, I'll take whoever hasn't been up.
Could I come up once, just one more question?
You got any money? I can make a lot of money tonight off you, huh?
This is kind gentle, but it's sort of been discussed at Lucy McNamara, sixteen Clear Pond Drive. So, the question was whether this development would undermine the stability of Highlands West, because Highlands West is built on sand. And...
The whole complex, village at Swan Pond, is all on sand.
Right, so, I don't know if this is fact or fiction, but the comment has been made, if groundwater levels change, there's the potential for Highlands West to sink.
Never heard that.
Comments?
I can quickly say, all of the construction for this project is above the groundwater. You know, we've done a series of soil tests on site, and we've confirmed exactly where the seasonal high water table is, and even the lower parking garage is above that, so we're not altering the groundwater.
Yeah, and Swan Pond was a gravel operation. So, when Joe Russo was done with it, that's when he got the town to convert it, and he built condos there, so. That, that was probably a perfect spot to be, 'cause it was still good stuff. Okay, so, you guys are pretty good where you are, this is good material, it's not, you don't want muck, you'll sink. This stuff, it's, it's good stuff, that's why, well, how long Swan Pond been there, thirty-something years?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, so, there was a, okay, anyone else before we, all right, now, we're gonna get a peer review, you guys got some homework, uh, what's our drop dead date for extension?
We need an extension. Um, it's four twelve.
It's over on the twelfth?
That's our, we need an extension, it's sixty-five days, it's up on the twelfth, they...
Oh, so if it snowed tonight, we're canceled?
Sorry?
If it snowed, we're dead. Um...
It's gonna snow.
All right. Your sixty-five days are up the twelfth, so, and you know what, fourteen-day rule?
What, the extension?
No, no, a fourteen-day rule is, you're gonna have your stuff into us fourteen days.
Fourteen days before the next, whenever we're slotted, yes.
There was some guy that used to drop it that night.
No, 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 I, I understand, yep.
So, between getting the peer reviewed on and the other stuff, you guys tell us.
How long, about the peer review, what, two to three weeks?
The scope is three weeks, that he states in there, but it won't start till we have a signed contract.
Right, I understood, yep. How much time do you think?
Be ready before the peer review's done.
Right.
Just a minute, we'll respond to their comments when we receive them.
Right. Um, when is the, your schedule, what do you have?
May second, May sixteenth, and June sixth.
May second, May sixteenth, and June sixth?
Mm-hmm.
Will they be able to get the peer review early May? We have to get things in two weeks, and so it'd be a fun people to, I just peer review. That makes it late May, early June.
So, June sixth?
So, that's why I'm asking, everybody get their ducks in line, 'cause we don't wanna show up here, and we're only half.
Okay. So, June sixth? June sixth, please?
June sixth.
Yes, please.
Seven ten.
Six, that's a familiar date, oh, yeah. Was that D-Day? We need it through the end of the, uh, June?
Yes.
June thirtieth?
Yeah.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to allow the applicant time extension through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Second from John, all in favor? Aye. And we'll continue this on June sixth at?
Seven ten.
Seven ten. Right now, you are the only ones.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your time tonight.
And everybody here, no more notices, this is just, remember, it's on the June sixth at seven ten, the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I partly agree, I just ended up thinking you needed to hear it again. The integrity of the, of the complex, the size of the complex, the, the lack of anybody talking to anybody at Highlands West, which was one of the conversations from the former owner. That never gonna happen, so, thank you. It is, I've, I've lived here for twenty-five years. To put that monstrosity next to where we are after having it gone into...
Well, I figured, if they actually end up putting shit in there.
Just come in.
They're not gonna want it.
It's ludicrous. So, thank you.
They wanted to come in the back, so they could look at them, count the boxes, make sure they got what they ordered.
Not until tomorrow, let me be.
If they actually put shit, that's the whole big thing. Empty stuff.
No, hopefully it wasn't. You know, okay, we're on mic, I'm done.
I know, that's why I turned like this. What? No, no, oh, no. Take a wait.
Twenty-four Marion Street.
Yeah, you know, yeah, I, I know.
All right, unless anybody wants to hang out with us for another hour, please, when you're done, go. If you wanna stay and watch, your lives are not very... Night. All right. Let's do, we'll knock out a couple things, uh, twenty-four Marion Street, you know that? Okay.
Yeah, hold on, please.
Okay.
So, this is the initial bond?
Yeah, okay. There was a bond request, but the issue is, can't do it. Because it was sent before that you cannot bond, you cannot sell subdivision without bonding the whole thing, so. It appears Mr. Marini sold the whole thing to you. So, he can't do that.
Uh, according to the lawyers, they were saying that...
Who's lawyers, yours or his?
His lawyers.
Yeah, his, I know the guy, I know.
Okay. They're stating that like the lot was taken out of the condominium, or in two thousand seventeen?
No, no, if you look at the approved plan, it was a two-lot subdivision approved by us.
Okay.
Okay, so, John Marini took his, what he allowed himself to do is benefit from selling that property. It was one big piece that I think you probably paid for. Now, he wanted to get that money at some point when he developed it later, which is fine. But he can't, so, the, right now, the way is subdivision control, it's a subdivision, so you have to, the owner of the development has to bond it.
Okay.
The owner of development would be the Main Street Condo Trust. All right? Mr. Marini could not sell you that lot as he did.
Okay.
And so, there was, and I, I sent it through Kate, an email that said, they could do it one, one of three ways. One is the road is built, you could just go and build it tomorrow, it doesn't matter who it is, and get it done, have it accepted by the town, and once accepted by the town, then the lot, and you could own the lot and do what you want, that's one. Second one is for you to buy the whole condo complex, which is not gonna happen, and bond it. Or, the third one would be for the condo complex to put up the bond. Now, that still could be done, you could pay them or put, give them the money, and they would be, so once that bond's all in place,
Okay.
then you could start, you'll, then you'd be able to start, yeah.
So, that's what...
Whoever owns the subdivision. Not the lot, the subdivision.
Can I bring this to you, just?
Yeah, you can give it, I can... Yeah, there was... Yeah, he took it, okay, he, he, okay. He took that out of the condo association, which he can do, but he can't take, the whole condo association owns that whole lot. When he sold each individual condos to the people, he, he had it in their master deed, that he, he can profit from selling that when he subdivides. So, they had to know that at some point in time, it was gonna be a two-lot subdivision, they were still gonna be part of the whole thing. But, when he goes to sell it, he, he gets all the money. But he, he can take it out of the condo, that, that has nothing to do with subdivision control.
Okay.
So...
So, I mean, I'm just asking, like, if I put the bond, and if I do the road, so that should not, that will not work?
You, your bond doesn't, you can't do it, 'cause you're, you're not, right now, the ownership per the legal is owned by the condo association.
Okay.
Which you have right now, you know, they'll probably sue me, but he took your money. He, he sold you the Brooklyn Bridge, is what he did. You agree with that one, Kyle? Come on, I need someone to agree.
Well, I've seen the deed into him.
Yeah.
All right, and it's for lot, I think lot one, I can't remember the lot.
It's whatever the lot is.
And the roadway.
You can't do that, though, as we know. It's a two-lot subdivision.
So, the second lot remains with the condo association?
No, right now, you can't, as we've been down the road, okay, we'll take a hundred lot subdivision, you can't sell a lot until the whole road's bonded, you agree?
Yes.
We saw it with the people before here, when they did the, the road up there, they didn't bond anything, and they just built their own houses, then they came in to bond, then they sold each house.
Right.
So, what we got here is, you can't, you can't extract it, 'cause everybody be doing that all up and down. Gigi's Way's a prime example, which someday we'll find out, the real truth is, was that actually carved out of the Whitman Home stuff?
What appears to have happened is something similar, it has been conveyed.
Doesn't mean it's conveyed legally.
That's beyond me.
Well, we, we gotta go by subdivision control, and subdivision control says you can not release, don't we have to go, you know how we release lots? We never released a lot, did we?
Correct.
'Cause we don't have a bond.
Correct.
So, what was sold was something that shouldn't have been sold.
So, where do we go from here?
Not us, it's, it's him, he's gonna have to go after Marini.
Is there any, like, so there's no option, like, I request for the, to put up the bond, to do the work?
You don't know, i- in our eyes, you, you don't own the whole subdivision, you don't own the Walthall piece, okay?
Even though the title says that I own that property, or it doesn't matter, I'm just asking, because I'm new to this thing, like...
You got, in my opinion, and maybe you'll tell, I believe you got hosed, he sold you something. He can sell you it if it was bonded, the whole road was bonded, he could've done that. Good for him, he didn't wanna put up the bond, and it come down to he didn't have the dough to do it, so he just sold you something that was, he couldn't sell. He showed you the condo docs, yeah, he has a right within his condo docs, we're not arguing that point, to sell. Matter of fact, when this all started, he signed the application to do this, and I said, no, 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 and I had to argue with his lawyer, you gotta go back, the condo association owned that whole full piece, so he had to get everybody to sign off. They had to sign off, but they had, they didn't read the original condo docs and said, oh, yeah, I guess he does get to develop that piece, and he does get to keep the money, we just have to sit here and sign off. So, the condo association, in, in theory, owns the whole subdivision. Now, whether it got recorded, things get recorded all the time, they're not right. Um, did you have title insurance on this when you bought it? Then, go talk to your title guy.
I did talk to the title insurance, and they were mentioning that it is under zoning laws, so it's... so it's not, nothing to do with the title issues, or like, you know, so it's between the town and you that...
It's not between us and the town. Oh, so you paid all that money to a title guy, he goes, not my problem. That's what he's supposed to do, go down the registry and see what happened, and he didn't. That's what titles are all about. But... So, I suggest you, who's his lawyer?
Frassia, I don't have...
I know, it's Jeff from Michael.
Yes, yes.
Oh, I'm familiar with Jeff, up there on Main Street. So, you might as well go talk to him and say, how are we gonna, how are we gonna fix this? See what you come out with. Now, you do get an op, not an option, but if you could get the condo association to agree, and however you give them the bond, and they post it with us, you're all set. If they're willing to do that.
But, I'm just thinking, like, why would they do it? Because if something goes wrong, you know, it will be under their name, right?
It's not, yeah, it doesn't benefit them.
Yes.
No, I understand.
So, is there any way that I can take this ownership, like, the bond thing, and make it right? Because I know it's been passed, like, I can ask the lawyer, and you know, it's gonna be back and forth, and you know, but...
Not with us. It's, you're on, this is still under subdivision control. It's gonna prove, and the next step is usually release the Form F covenant, which means it can go down and be recorded, which I believe this was. Right? Form F is the first step?
No.
What's the...
Form F is release the covenant.
Okay, what's the first step, when after we approve it, when they go record?
Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry. Kate, help me out.
The, they record the decision.
Yeah.
The plan is signed, they record the Form F.
Okay. Yeah, they're recording.
Correct.
And then...
It's a Form I is the release, correct?
Yeah, Form F.
It's the release of the Form F.
Okay.
Yeah, so, Form F, what happens is, he should have gone down the registry, recorded, which I'm sure he did, come back to us with a Form F, it says, here's the covenant, I own everything. Then, when he posts the bond, and he gives us the money at the rate, then we, there's a thing called, now getting into little Form I, we release it to that time. Then he can go sell any lot he wants, because the, right now, the subdivision has a bond over it that allows the sale of anything with that.
We accept the bond and release the Form, the Form F.
Form F, and accept Form I, so, that's how we have to do in subdivision.
Sign the plan, accept the Form F, accept the bond, release the Form F.
So, the decision's recorded, the plan's recorded, I don't know if the Form F is recorded.
No, we never approved it. Never, he never presented to us.
That's true.
He went off, we never saw it, right, Kate? Never got anything back. John, you want to shed any light on this?
Well, I would say you're correct. I don't know all the details of whether a Form F was executed and, and filed at the registry deeds, but the chairman is telling you the truth, sir. And what I would do if I were seeing your case is, you can call me tomorrow, I'll give you my phone number. And I agree with you, okay, so you'll write to me as soon as I'm done, sir. We'll figure this out.
He probably doesn't even know who John is.
Yeah, he's telling, he's, he did the plans.
I did the plans, I know Mr. Marini, I know all the lawyers involved. Give me a call, I'm pretty sure that there's a way that this can be worked out. All right, believe me, I'm on your side, I'm gonna try to help you with the board, okay? I think that there's, it seems to me, it was done backwards, right? The chairman is not speaking against you. He's actually trying to help you work through the system in the correct way, right? So, there's a thing called Form F, and basically it says, as he said, you had a hundred lots, and you didn't do the Form F, and you just sold some lot, never built the road. The guy who bought the lot, he's got a lot, but he doesn't have any, anything, any utilities or anything, right? So, he's just trying to protect you.
Okay.
And I think I can help you.
And, John, I'll just go a little, because I'm getting a little tiffed at what happened. They had a Realtor in our office, and then she thought she could sell it, and then she talked to this lawyer, and the lawyer asked, who's the chairman of the planning board, and as soon as they said it was me, click!
Let's see if we can, let's see if we can...
All right, so, you kind of luck, you lucked out a little tonight, you got John behind you, all right? Thank you, chairman. All right, good luck. What else can you hang out for, John? All right, 7:30, we're well after preliminary Winter Street, four lots. All right, and off of Winter Street, it's... Everybody knows, Little Lotsa, I do. It's, and you present the preliminary plan, and just so, I don't know if you explain to your clients, John, our vote don't mean nothing. I mean, we loved it, we said yes, so they're presenting, it just goes as something. So, with that being said, John, I ask you to go far.
Okay, so, just for the record, Mr. Chairman, my name's John Glossa, Glossa Engineering, 46 East Street in East Wall Pole. I have some of the McGoughlin family with me here, Rick McGoughlin down the end, his brother Jay, and Elise are here. And some of you may have remembered Charlie McGoughlin, I certainly remember him, he was a great guy. Charlie has passed, and now, the family is, has a piece of property that was Charlie's property. Here's the, just the locus matricum, so, Winter Street, this is the old right of way. I think this is the property right in the town of Wall Pole, where the soccer fields are, that are across from the, from the old prison. Eldor Drive here, Holiday Farm Road over here. And so, just going quickly to the existing conditions plan. It is seven and a half acres, essentially, as quote unquote, frontage on Winter Street. This stub here was laid out, meets your current regulations, 46 foot wide, and has 30-foot roundings at Winter Street. Doesn't, it does show on this plan, Rick was smart enough to, before they were going to repay, like, he worked with the town engineer, Winter Street, to bring the sewer line, and the water line, and the gas, and the gas line into the stub, just for future use, should we get approval from the board at some point. So, the lot sort of comes in, it's fairly level until you get past the butter's houses here, and then it sort of drops down. We have wetlands here, and then we have an area that rises up quite a bit here, and kind of a level area, but a very dry area up here. Carl and I, the town engineer, myself, did some sort of testing in some places out here too, in the anticipation of some, some, some design. So, the proposal is to cut the lots, four lots out, extend the roadway in with the cul-de-sac, meeting all the requirements of the size of your cul-de-sac and all, and then have four lots with the required frontage, and required lot area, required upland area, zoning circles, and the width at the 30-foot setback, to make sure that we meet all the requirements of the zone, so, I think these are numbered kind of strange. We have a lot, one here, 2.9 acres, lot two, 1.4 acres, lot three, 48,000, a little bit, 1.1 acres, and then lot four, 1.5 acres. And so, the lots are kind of, different than from what you might see usually. And I'm gonna show you that in a second. Just showing you just quickly what we would show for a roadway, so here's a roadway coming in. Sidewalk on one side, extends in about 450 feet from Winter Street, 26 feet of pavement, you know, all the things that's required in your, in your current zone. We do have wetlands crossing, but because the only way to get to the upland on this property is to cross wetlands, it's a limited project, and you're allowed to do that. So, you do have to file with the Conservation Commission, but it's something that's allowed in the wetlands protection. So, there's the roadway, and then the final thing I'm gonna show you is, this is how we would see, I know it's hard to see just looking at the floor, that's why we kind of drew this from the... This is what we would see this to look like, right? So, this first lot on the right, which is actually lot four, its frontage is here, but its buildable area is here, so it's all connected like that. Lot three, which is this one, its frontage is here, the lot's here. Lot one, its frontage is here, but to reduce the amount of wetland alteration, we're accessing it here. And then lot two is fairly simple, the frontage is here, and we're accessing it here. So, at least in my, in my mind, that's the way I would see how it would, how it would lay out.
So, would that be a right of way through lot two to get to lot one?
So, they would be easements.
Yeah.
Have driveway easements for, that would cross the lot, this lot here, and then cross this lot to get to here. So, that's sort of where we're at. This was more of a, I'm sure you guys are very tired, but it was more of a, you know, not really approval, not approval, you know, tentative approval, tentative disapproval. It's kind of like, does anybody really see anything here that's completely not palatable to them? Is there something else that we could do? There's actually, we did actually, we can actually make five lots here, but we thought that was kind of pushing the... So, anyway, with that, Mr. Chairman, I think, you know, we'd like to sort of hear comments from the board.
Yes, yeah, I'll give them to you. For the 46-foot stub, that's what it was intended to do. Whether we like it or not, doesn't make a difference, but I think, as we know, or you guys know better, it's whatever conservation does. What's, what you got here today could change 100% with conservation, correct?
Well, we didn't just make up the wetland flags, it was...
I'm not, I'm not accusing you of, no, I'm just saying, things can move. It may not, that's all. This is a tough spot.
Things, things could, could move. I would say the one thing that they might object to is having the double driveway here, and they might ask for that to be one, a single driveway.
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't you do that? Because we allow that, right? Shared driveway?
Yeah, just because in my experience, most people kind of shy away from that if they don't have to have it, if you know what I'm saying? It's not a driveway that's shared, because, you know, Ralph, Ralph is always, has to pile the driveway, and see him in the plows, you know, my husband has to, you know, do this.
Wouldn't it take a special permit, Mr. Chairman?
It would be a...
No, it's kind of what they're doing up on Turner's.
Common driveway does...
Common driveway, that's what I meant, common driveway.
It would be a common driveway.
Common drive.
It doesn't need a special permit.
That, that wouldn't require it.
Right.
But if you joined them, it would.
Yes.
Yeah, but you know what happened, Kyle, it's like the guys down on Summer Street, all of a sudden, the brothers. They kind of showed it like that, and all of a sudden, gee.
That was during my first tenure, Mr. Chairman, I remember.
How'd you let that go?
I didn't. Maggie did.
It's there. Wow. Poor Maggie.
So, how many crossings of the...
Well, there's just the main crossing here, which I think the guy actually figured out the, how much that was. There's the crossing there. Wettland alteration is 3,900 square feet. So, even at that, even if it wasn't a limited project, the conservation still could approve it. The other crossings, I don't think he really calculated them, but it's probably, it was kind of... So, the other crossing looks to be, one of them might be 100 square feet, the other one might be... So, the only one's less than 1,000 square feet.
So, do you have to have other land that replaces it, other wealth?
Yeah.
Replicate it, usually they wind it replicated on one and a half to one, to two. Which we, which obviously, there's plenty, plenty of area here to, to replicate.
I mean, I was like Jack said, you know, we would defer to the Conservation Commission and...
All right, I'll read the board health, the lot's 19th, voting unanimously, they elect to reiterate their longstanding motion regarding new construction within the wetlands. All best practice, talk to Norfolk County Bug Control for spraying, and once street lights added for safety, they would like them, so... The one from Landis, Conservation Agent, lot six. He said, one, the wetland line shown in the plan has not been approved. I recommend that the wetland resource areas should be approved prior to definitive subdivision plan, I think.
Yeah, we would definitely file ANR or something like that.
The lot configuration should not, should not cause self-imposed wetland crossings. The A and R should not have a self-imposed wetland alteration, I'm not sure what that is.
I don't know, but we're worried, there's two, clearly there's two areas of...
All right, question, John, why are we the next one? We had something, we did an A and R back in October 19th for this, did you do that?
Right, because, that's why I say, there is the possibility of getting five lots.
Okay.
But that requires us to build a road here.
Oh, okay.
And so, McGoughlin swapped land with Lee here, and so, you can see we had, we made the rounding and all. But now, just, you know, to get that extra lot, and to go, it just isn't worth it.
Worth the money, yeah.
It's gonna cost more to create the lot than the lot's worth.
Yep.
So, we took that off the table, so, there is an A and R plan filed at the registry deeds that shows this, and it probably shows the wetlands, because we're required to show the wetlands.
Okay.
As I said, I implied wetlands, the Conservation, the wetland professional who works for me often, she flagged wetlands, we located wetlands.
All right, and number four, configuration should be designed to minimize wetland resource impacts, and recommend that you review all, all the designs prior to filing the definitive plan, such as moving the cul-de-sac further away from the wetlands. It's Landis, you're gonna...
So, we have to create the, we didn't go anything farther than...
No, I, it's, it's Landis's comment.
No, no, I, I just, I just...
Now, it's Kyle's turn.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I delivered a memo March 29th, they're one pager, four, four items. I noted that the proposed design appears to comply fully with subdivision rules and regs, 26-foot wide, regular cul-de-sac, curbs, roundings, all those things appear to conform. I do note that, as Mr. Glossa noted, that there's already sewer and water and gas stubs in there for that road, should it be approved. I do note that the driveway to number 215, Winter Street, that's the house on the left side of the entrance of the Lee property, is right there at the rounding, so something's going to have to happen with that. And that, and this is a result, that Mr. Glossa shows a gravel wetland on the detention basin, which is something we haven't seen before, but that, you know, that'll all get worked out with Conservation Commission. But I do note that it's a bit unusual, but it's, it's, it's a point. That's it.
Okay. John, any questions, comments?
No, I think it's more an issue of conservation is willing to accept it. Unusual lots, I'm thinking conservation would be in favor of the common driveway, but, well, at least part of it, yeah. But, I think that portion is more or less outside of most of the wetlands, so we can maybe avoid some of that. You seem to have found spots where you could put your houses in the...
You seem to have found spots where you can put your houses in the uplands, so that's good. Is that showing off sidewalk? Okay, yeah. Lighting?
Well, we would certainly add, usually we work that out with, with the signage.
Almost done. Phil?
How's that, Phil?
Are you looking to get a variance and not build out the cul-de-sac, or would you be building out the cul-de-sac?
Well, so, I've had discussions with the McLaughlins about that. I mean, they would be willing to, if you decided that this is sort of the type of subdivision that would be more palatable this way, they would be willing just to do two lots if they could just simply bring in a reasonably width driveway to serve this one and then to do that one.
So, instead of doing four, they do two?
They would do two and then we're gonna get rid of the, we're still gonna lay out enough roadway to create the frontage and area for two lots, but then we would ask for a complete waiver from your regulations from the twenty-six foot wide road and the sidewalk and this and that. And essentially just have a, kind of an oversized driveway to a point and then just split off and go to two individual lots. If the Board thinks that's palatable and could tell me that, I could go over and see the fire department and others who might have, you know, some reason to do that and not do that and, and just see it. So, we wouldn't be asking for a vote, but just shook your head yes or no.
That would minimize the wetland, the wetland impact.
It would be a lot less wetland impact because it'd be a lot less pavement.
How long would it be coming in, John? How long would the road be coming in?
Um, well, I mean, it would, it would just go to here as far as, it wouldn't be, you know, we'd have to work that out. I mean, it's between the town engineer, probably fire, the Board, maybe as little as sixteen feet, but maybe it's twenty feet. And then split up into two twelve-foot driveways. Again, fire department might say no, we want a cul-de-sac, but maybe not. I think there's some, it's been some change over there and some attitude a little bit, I think, maybe not. Could be wrong, but I can find that out. And if the Board thinks that's palatable...
What's the family's preference?
Uh, I don't, I think that their preference probably would be the two lots, actually. I think their preference is to sort of get this behind them as quickly as possible. They're not necessarily out to, you know, make a billion dollars, they're all gonna hit the powerball anyways.
Remember your planning board when you...
After they vote. I think that they would be very happy with two lots with some reduced requirements.
You all set, Phil?
Yeah, I'm, I'm up for that.
Kate?
Yeah, and I, as far as the two lots, I'd have no problem with that if the, if everyone else agreed to it, the fire department and, you know.
I would say, yeah, I would agree.
Yeah, the question of can they fit cul-de-sac in, well, one thing, it would keep it out of the wetlands with what Landis was talking about too. It would pull it back.
We would just show it, we wouldn't build it, right? So, we'll just, we would just show it to say, here, we need all of your dimensional requirements as far as the geometry goes. We're just going to ask you for waivers from the construction requirements.
Yeah.
Right, so, so we're gonna show the cul-de-sac, we might be able to make it shorter, whatever, but we're still gonna show a forty-six foot wide street, cul-de-sac of, is it a hundred and four foot diameter, thirty foot rounding here, but we're just not gonna build, we would just build, say, let's just say for the sake of our...
You'd have to build whatever the...
Sixteen foot wide road here, twelve foot driveway, twelve foot driveway.
You'd just have to build something that the fire department would be happy with, yeah.
Yeah, and so if they were happy with that, the McLaughlins would be happy with that if the Board is happy with it. Sounds like something that, okay, all right, that's all I'm asking for, just asking for the...
Whoa, 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 whoa. You come in here with a four and all you do is talk about a two, and we got his one check for a four. Where's our second check? Ah, you slid that one in? Huh?
Discussion.
Oh, just, God, I always thought of some of the guys you work for, too. All right, I'm just gonna give you, the normal advice is, if you're gonna come in with it, remember you gotta show you can do it.
Right, we need a proof plan.
So, you're not gonna come in with a four and then show us a two?
We would come in, if we're gonna do a two, we would show you a proof plan for a two, if that's what you want to see.
Well, no, we get this with the, the, they don't, Conservation doesn't seem to understand it, is we, we have to have a full build-out. Then you ask for the waivers, as you know, you're gonna show that other plan, but they seem to go with the other plan on their Conservation comments without knowing which one we're gonna vote on. Do you follow, that's happened a lot, hasn't it, Kate? They don't seem to, they don't seem to understand we're dealing with two plans. So, if we say no to the, to the twenty footer, you gotta go with the big one, but they're already hooked on the small one. But, as long as you show them, just as long as, because if something happened, you don't wanna be in a situation where, oh, jeez. Because they're, she doesn't wanna pay a lot of attention to something you don't wanna do, which I understand, but if you get rejected, now what do you do? And if the thing's wrong, so.
Okay.
So, just be aware of that, all right? So, I can't show you my cards. Now, question, had nothing to do with it, a little bit to do with it. Where does the sewer stop on Winter?
Well, it just broadened up past, so it used to stop at Holliday Farm.
Okay, who brought it up there? The town?
The town brought it up there to service...
To stop where?
Stops at Yonkers driveway.
To service where the soccer fields are, right? There's some sort of a...
Oh, okay, all right, all right. Oh, so it had nothing to do with a lot out front then, huh?
Has nothing, had nothing to do with this. No, no, it had nothing to do with this.
Oh, that's right, this is, this is Kyle's.
When I first started working on this...
Yeah, I know, I know they brought the sewer down.
We were, we were showing the sewer coming.
Yeah, no, I know, I remember them bringing it down. They also had the new field down there on Winter Street too, right? You remember that? It was washed down, all over Winter Street. I remember that.
Well, there was a big storm, right?
Yeah, and it come all down the hill. All the dirt was on Winter Street. So, I called up John to say, what, you're building a field on Winter now? That was...
Came down through the easel.
Yes, yeah, through the easel.
And they had just put the new...
And everybody's worried about that they were gonna use that as an access, but they had issue, that was one, that was a poor design up there. Because the basins weren't big enough, so, all right, so what do you want, John? You, oh, you wanna tentative approval?
Yeah, well, I, I think you should follow up and whether you approve it or don't, as I said, in with preliminary plans when I've been here before, I think we would just appreciate it if we get a vote.
All right, I recommend a vote, because I was told tonight how to vote on the previous one at like eight o'clock.
I'm not gonna tell you how to vote, I'm just saying...
I'll make a motion to give tentative approval for Winter Street Estates.
Second.
The second, all in favor? Aye, opposed, abstain?
Thank you.
Close vote.
Well, we look forward to working with you to something that everybody...
John, we know you have to say that.
We should've been first.
You should make sure next time you are.
Wood? Yeah, I know, well, as soon as you saw those two, you knew you were in for a big time.
Can I make a motion to...
Motion what? What, I, I just gave it down to you.
No, you just gave me the plan, you need the letters. Next time you gotta bring your deck of cards or something.
Not the plan, I...
Oh, they're inside, excuse me.
What was that?
I said, excuse me.
Can this?
No.
Sorry?
No. It's too late to be sorry.
Bye, bye, okay, goodbye. All right, uh, what's on that? We gonna endorse something?
Uh, yes, right here. Yeah, I'm gonna give it, he might want that, I don't know.
Okay, we, no appeal, Arcadia Brothers. This is something though. She's always giving us this speech...
First site plan.
This is the first time I've ever seen it. Did she use the stamp on it?
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Did she use the stamp it?
Excuse me?
Did you always stamp it, no appeal?
Subdivision.
All right, sorry, the first time I've ever seen this.
Say that again?
First time I seen this in my life.
Say sorry.
Sorry for listening.
What, just Jack, you sign first?
Sign what?
Just a motion to endorse.
I don't care.
Sign.
Yep, we'll have Katie be able to talk, let her have her night.
No, no, I'm not...
I'll make a motion to endorse Site Plan one twenty-one, twenty-six, so. Second, there we go, all in favor? Aye.
Okay. He did the top line. Jeez, good job.
I didn't, am I supposed to? I'll go to the bottom. Yeah, I'll go to the bottom, yeah, watch.
Yeah.
You wanna go home, don't you?
They don't even endorse the, I mean, they don't even record this, right?
Yeah, I don't give a...
No. Sign a different line on every page.
Who's packing up those stuff, all right?
Bring my stuff upstairs, Mr. Chairman.
No, because you're all locked.
Move your stuff over here, this is your own aside.
That's that back foot, he yells at me.
Kate?
Kate?
I threw it, it didn't get to you.
Is this the McLaughlin family that lived up on Alton Street or...
Don't you remember Charlie?
I know Chuck, yeah. Thank you, I'm sorry. Your crotch doesn't sound good.
Charlie was like twenty years old.
That tickly dry.
Used to have the big bushy beard, drove...
What I'm thinking about is like...
The kids had it, I thought I dodged it.
Probably one of his kids, it was like seven or eight.
It's sunblock, and it just started today.
Had that big, looked like a big raised long ranch right at the corner that blew with it. I don't know if anybody still lives there, but...
You know, it's, it's harder to track on it.
No. Alton, yeah.
Thank you.
Hope you feel that.
And I remember Charlie driving his green GMC pickup.
I remember him, I didn't really know.
See him down, you'd see the truck always down.
Actually, I didn't caught you.
Laying a lottery down at the...
You should've heard me this morning.
Cut the store down on Foxville there. There were a bunch of them, because Judy taught a couple of them swimming lessons.
Do you wanna do the...
I don't know, how many goddamn pages?
All right, then do a screen.
I did not do a screen.
None of those at the end should have it, Paul.
No, they don't.
No, none of this?
No, no, it's all...
I'm surprised you even put them in there. So, are we talking about the master plan comments, Jack?
Yeah, well, I guess we're gonna do it while you're signing. Yep, master plan comments, all right, so, I sent mine in, so. Numbered up to sixty-one, some of them are just comments, but a lot of need to be changed.
Yeah, I just had a question about, I mean, first of all, I don't agree with all of them as being, you know, necessarily being wrong or, and then second, do we wanna distinguish between things that are, need to be fixed because there's a mistake or just things that are more opinion or...
Well, okay, then you tell me what's an opinion that shouldn't be there on mine, out of the sixty-one.
Well, you mentioned like climate change, a number of places. So, climate change is one of the areas the Select Board asked to be in the master plan.
Yeah, okay, number six, I asked climate change, it's a big thing, climate change alone. I asked, what has the town done? Past, future, and present, and we all, that's not even addressed in the whole thing.
Well, it does, it does mention about climate change.
Yeah, yeah, let's keep what I asked. I asked, what has the town done? What did they do in the past, what have they done now, and what are they doing in the future?
Yeah, and it does, it does mention what the town has done.
It does, what it mentioned?
It mentions about there was the, I forget the exact acronym, but the Sustainability Committee.
No, 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 what have they done, what is the town, does the towns have a plan? There's a selection of, we're gonna put so many EV chargers, we're converting to so many cars, that, that's not in here. I, I don't, study plans don't make it, study plans is just a study. What have they physically done to support climate change?
Yeah, and what would be the Green Communities Act, now they...
Once again, it's an act, Phil, I'm sitting there. How many EV cars does the town use?
Yeah.
How many, how many do you know?
I, I don't, I don't think any yet, but I don't...
Any, okay, so, how many EV charging stations the town put in?
It's, it's under, in progress, there's one going up in the library that's taken three years to do for...
Okay, so, this is the stuff that you wanna see in your master plan?
But, but I guess the question would be, sure, some things are missing, it would be nice to have all those things in, but the master plan, you, you know, was given to a committee of representatives from different town boards.
Yeah, I feel like you've been through it before, so in other words...
This board has, and so are, are we going to go through and, I mean, I'm just trying to move this forward. I know, so, so we, so, so are we sending this to Judy to make all these changes?
Well, it's up to the board what they think, yes or no, that's why I send them out, that's why I want everybody, so. That's it, all right? Kate, what do you think?
Um, I love my changes.
You want your changes, no, okay. What about any of mine you don't like or...
Oh, no, no, I, no, I'm not opposed to your changes.
Okay.
I thought you were asking me what I felt about mine, I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's okay. Paul, what do you think on...
I, I'm not for this plan.
All right.
I'm just dead against it.
Okay, so you want...
So, are we, are we gonna throw the master plan away?
I, I, Bill, that would be my vote, sir.
Yeah, I mean, I almost feel that there's, I started picking at it, it's almost like there's a sense that, you know, you don't really wanna pass it.
No, 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 no. I mean, everybody's making comments like grammatical, you know, period here, da-da-da, maybe a subsection and so forth. I really think that, you know, you throw this, you throw this out as is, I don't think it represents, I don't think the sample size of, of the town was, you know, I don't think every committee member was, was interviewed.
So, why don't, why don't we, we never asked the committee to appear before us to ask whether the committee members... So, Kate, you, you were at most meetings and you've never, you've never had problems with most of this, so I don't know.
It's not that I have, so, I had a big problem at the, on the back half, and I think I voiced that. And I, I think there was a lot of frustration at the meetings, some meetings, not just, you know, by various people. But that being said, I think the comments that I added were things I mentioned during the process. And I think that when you sit and review the plan afterwards, after you've, after you see how things went down and how we were just sort of dropped, I think it was an eye-opener for me and it made me realize that, you know, maybe a lot of this was copy and paste. Maybe, yes, we, not as a committee, the committee worked hard, but, you know, we weren't the ones that put it together. So, I do think that I scrutinized it more when I looked at the final. And I think that the changes I came up with were pretty reasonable and like I say, the, the public safety one had been mentioned previously. But I also think that we as a planning board are the ones signing off on it. So, if those are changes that Jack came up with, Jack has the right to do that. If Paul doesn't like the plan, Paul has the right to say that. We are the ones that are ultimately responsible for it, so, you know, I'm not saying that the committee didn't work hard, but this was not a perfect plan.
But does that mean you don't agree with all the recommendations that we voted on, that you voted on?
Phil, I think she just said this is not a perfect plan.
Yeah, and I think I answered your question. And I think that you wanna put me on the spot and you wanna try and, you know, make it look like I'm doing something wrong? And I'm not even finger pointing, I'm just saying that I think that this isn't, you know, the way it stands right now, do I think it's fantastic? No, do I have confidence in it? No. If someone comes before planning board and uses the master plan... No, if someone comes before planning board and uses the master plan in my head, am I gonna say, oh, yeah, that's important, we follow that? Absolutely not, I, I really don't feel confidence in it, but I'm willing to go to the next step with it with changes.
But you have to understand, Katie, you were, I just, just said, you know, we were both there all this time, I just, I just have to.
Absolutely, and you had a whole lot of conversations behind the scenes that I did not, was not involved in, and that being said, I think my, one of, one of my biggest issues is the information that was gathered, and no, and I voiced my opinion strongly from the minute that started, I don't think those surveys were accurate, I don't think they were wide reach of wall pole.
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely not, and I said it from the beginning, and I was just basically hushed, so, you know what, if you don't wanna hear what I have to say, don't ask me, because I'm being honest, I'm always honest, I'm a straight shooter, no, I didn't sit at the meetings and try to like, blow the plan up and fight with everyone the whole time, but I wasn't afraid to say if I didn't think something was great, so, you know, I voiced it here, I've voiced it over and over, I'm sick of voicing it, I'm saying the same thing, everyone's sick of hearing me.
No, I don't, no, I think you, I, I don't think so.
I mean, it's, it's, I think we're going round in circles with the dog chasing their tail, you know, it's just, let's move forward and do the changes, or let's scrap it and start over, one or the other, I mean, instead of just beating it to death like this.
All right, I'm, I'm gonna blow through mine right now, and everything I get in here has nothing to do with what the committee did or didn't.
Right, it's not about the committee.
Nothing, and I don't need to hear it, I'll go through, first off, I want a list of all the people interviewed, give some credence, there ain't one name in there.
Yeah, so, so.
No, 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 Phil, let me go.
Okay.
I'm gonna roll, I want their names in there, I want a list of, they should have had a list of what was recommended in two oh four, what got completed, and what didn't, and what do we do if that, we have any of that in here, we also need school enrollment projections, because people are gonna look at it, well, where are the school enrollment projections? There are none, uh, I wanted the, the future single-family girls, you know what's up, uh, the forty B section, we didn't have past, we didn't have present, we didn't have the future listed there, this is right where we are now, climate change, we already went through that, um, the statement by members of business and EDC saying permit is an issue, right? Boom, permitting like we're slowing it down, first off, who said it and why is it even in there, that's a big slap, I'm tired of hearing, I can guess who said it, but that doesn't even, that's just like someone bitching and putting it in there. It's after eleven, I can swear.
It's not after eleven.
Well, it's after, somewhere it's after eleven, um, all the groups need to be listed or taken out, we have the piece in action, the pipeline group, but we don't have anybody else in there, we, we don't have the Chamber of Commerce, we don't have, uh, downtown, we, we seem to focus on those, so we.
You're taking it out of context, though, Jack.
Phil, those are the only two private ones in here.
No, no, wait, 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 that was in the context of, of the.
Yeah, but why'd they need to be in there, they didn't need to be in there.
They were in there under the section of climate change because those groups were.
Okay, Phil, I'll say right here, they are groups, so I'm gonna keep going.
Can I just say?
We need the top five issues of the townspeople put out front, and that wasn't put there. Uh, now we'll get into the rest of it, the approval date in the second page, it should be when we, should be changed, not when it was, you already have it, should be the master plan at twenty-four, not two thousand and twenty-two, because it's three hundred years.
Well, but, but again, that was because the master plan never moved, we, we had some problems, the master plan was gonna be twenty twenty-two, wasn't gonna be twenty twenty-three.
Okay, Phil, I'm just, oh, wow, if we're gonna bitch about these little thing, my God, letter to the residents, we should have had the, should have been capitalized in front, there's a lot of words in the first letter, you have committee and consultants with, here is just grammatical stuff that should be done.
I wrote the letter, by the way.
I'm not even talking about the.
I don't think the letter should be in there.
I wrote the letter.
But I'm just saying, you got grammatical stuff, you gotta capitalize committees, uh, you need the names of all the departments, the private entities, as I said, who you talk to, a lot of hyphens, all the pictures need to be identified, all right, you may know where it is, I know most of them, probably know more than anybody, but whoever picked up the plan, it could have a clue where this is, I mean, how, that's not picking on anybody, uh, key findings, I talked about the, on two point one, about who said it, uh, I said, did say climate change, why listed, but I said that's my comment, electric car statement does not tie in anything, just thrown in there, there was a statement on the ads, but I don't know what this is about, I need that explained more, uh, key findings, how we change, what, key findings should have been weighed against the master plan, how we should change it, uh, tax rate, states the lowest tax rate, but misleading, because it's, it's gone up a lot.
Taxes, taxes, taxes.
KJ, the, the percentage do not add up to the hundred percent, page number thirteen.
I think that was a fractional thing.
Well, Phil, I'm just telling you what's in, I haven't, this is one bitch against people on this.
Mr. Chair, is this, is this productive?
Yes.
To go through, I'm just saying is, you know.
Oh, all I'm saying is, what's your OSR piece?
I know, I know, I know that.
Fields, identify, uh, we got, all right.
We could just read it, we could read it, though, you know what I'm just saying, it's just like.
But it's, all it does is tell you.
It does, I, I agree, Jack, I thought you did a great job.
We did a credit to the town for the sidewalk on North Fox Street, when it was fact, the Bristol Brothers, uh, we didn't even list about the bird, uh, there's so much in there about COVID, just gets me, uh, I didn't like the scare tactic of COVID, because we jumped in off our county, uh, once again, all we have is recommendation study groups, no.
But if, but Jack, does anybody, does anybody have issues with the recommendations? I mean, that's the heart of the.
No, the heart of it is to show what you've done and what you're gonna do, we have a whole list at the end of all these stupid committees, there's nothing that says, did, do you have anything for the selectmen, so we, here's one through three for what they need to do? No, we don't have any of that, people wanna read this and know what, what's up.
So that's why I said to put in those two appendices, because those are the working documents that summarize.
There's nothing in my, all right, you said this is picking on, no, this is stuff that should have been added, and should have been in there.
But I just wanna know if people have issues with the recommendations, because that's what the committee spent all our time on, that is really the heart of what the, what the master plan is.
My last comment on this, probably, why did it, why did you have to put it in there about somebody bitching how long it takes to get approvals, and you didn't identify who was some of these?
I, I have no, I.
What, you have no idea?
No, that, that is, that, Kate, the consultants talked to a lot of people, so, so.
Then identify the person who has the problem.
Well, I think what happened.
No, I did, identify, I wanna know who in the EDC has a problem with that, it's basically a bitch slap at us, saying we're not doing our job, taking too long, I don't need someone whining in this.
I have, but, Jack, first of all.
You take it out or get the guy's name.
Okay, but I, first of all, the, we don't, we probably don't know, because when they do, when the, the consultants get all the, the comments from a lot of different people there, they're synthesizing that and putting it together.
So that needed to be in there, you felt that needed to be there with no backup?
I, I.
With nobody saying what?
If you wanna take it out, I'm fine, it's not.
No, I want, these are one of my comments, I want, took a lot of time to read this, none of these, any ones of my own comments, I say comment only.
Yeah.
My comment, my comment, that's all, everything else is like, identify the pictures, Phil, nobody knows what half this stuff is.
It would have been nice if they'd done that.
Would have been nice.
No, no, I, I mean.
It would have.
We did have some issues at the end getting the report out, and, but I don't wanna take away from the recommendations, because that's the most important part of this.
It doesn't look anything like the oh four one, the oh four one was pretty good.
That's where the committee worked really hard.
And that's what you should have gone to.
The oh four was great, it said we need a new school, we need a field, and, and look what happened, fire station, police station, you go back to that one, you, whoa, we did all that.
You need a starting point, and then the future reference, and, you know.
And what you did before, what you thought, and what didn't get done from oh four, does it need to be done now, or what's changed, but.
And make sure that it is the voice.
All I can say is that, the.
All right, I'll make, I'll make a motion to have all the comments that anybody's done put in.
I, I, I think the com, we should, I, I would like to answer some of the comments that.
Phil, Phil, can I just ask, like, I mean, I, I understand you with the chair, sir, and again, I, I have not heard one negative comment about the committee or you, and, and anything personal, I just, I'm, it's just amazing that you wanna comment on it, you know, the person who put this plan together, where is that person?
We, the, the committee, the committee was responsible, and, and a lot of, so if, if we missed things, that wasn't just the consultants, it was, you can argue the committee.
Phil, Phil, I. The consultant got paid.
Can I have your attention for a moment?
Sure.
The last two pages, they actually have signature blocks.
And we don't need them, but that's a picture, John. What he did was, he just superimposed that on every, that's what happens with these computers nowadays.
I think you wanna go back to the recommendations, I, I just feel that's the most important part, and is that a?
I'll make a, the, the motion been made, I'll make a motion.
What was the motion again, Chair?
Mine and Kate's comments in there, and also Paul had a comment that's not seen it put in there, but, it's a, it's a statement, right?
Yeah, but what about, what about Paul's comment about?
I just, I'm voting.
Adding the community roots.
I'm voting, oh, yes to your comments if you want.
Put these in, and then you see what comes up after that.
But I, I'm, for the plan, I'm saying, I'm a, my, my, my comment, Jack, is to scrap it, take an oh four plan, take what is, any data that has been collected, revisit it, and then redo it, that is my recommendation.
So you would throw away the master plan, all the work that went on with this hard work and committee.
You know, I get tired, I've heard it my whole life, human's effort, hard work, everybody who works in the public is a human, I'm, I don't need the, the piling on, I, I got a motion, you, yours, you can vote later, too, when we get, when we get.
Fair enough, sir.
Okay, how's that?
I need a second on that motion.
All right.
Second.
Okay, all of us in favor?
Aye.
My, aye.
No.
Okay, so it's going in, so.
Wait, what was the vote?
You abstain?
I'm gonna abstain, just because I have my own view.
Three, one, one, so, are you gonna give this to her, or how's this gonna happen?
Um, well, I, I think it was taken away from me at one point, and that all conference correspondents, I, I don't know what, what decided, I, I can send it to them, but her, if you want me to.
Okay, yeah, send it to her, tell her we need this.
No, my comments are in there as well.
That's fine.
Yeah, but, but I do.
Wait a minute, I wanna make sure that it doesn't say, get rid of all of Jack's comments.
Yeah.
That would be a good one, Phil, I'd congratulate you on that one.
But what is the, could we talk about what the path going forward is?
Putting the holders for a reason?
Yes, that's, our next hearing, when it was so big, I just thought you'd. Path going forward in my eyes is, the adjustments go in, and then we vote the master plan.
So are we waiting for her to make all these changes?
Yeah.
She won't, I mean, how, she won't be able to make some of these changes without knowing a little more details of what the issue is.
Yeah, Chair, Mr. Chair, I would agree.
If she has questions, she can ask us.
Yeah, she can ask.
She's the hired.
But here's the thing, I would agree with what Phil is saying, though, you're gonna ask this woman to do these changes, and we're gonna vote on it when, if, it may still not, it still may not pass, and if it still doesn't pass, you.
That's the way it goes, but if she has questions, she can always send them in, which she doesn't understand, I thought some, most of them were pretty.
I beg you to understand why this, I mean, it just feels to me like you're, you're, you're picking on a lot of the, I haven't heard one mention about recommendations.
Phil, I think you've just taken it personally, and I think that you.
I just wanna move, we voted on, most of the recommendations were voted on more than a year ago, a year ago, just April, April fourteenth.
But we're not voting on just the recommendations, we have a planning board, we're voting on the entire plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we don't agree with the entire plan the way it stands right now, and that's what we're saying, we're not saying anything against the committee, we're not saying anything against you, we are saying that there are tweaks that need to be made, it is not a personal issue, it shouldn't become one.
But I think Jack's list is more than just tweaks, I mean, I mean, just go through Jack's.
Sorry, I can't, I, I guess I can't, basically, we showed a great plan and voted. If she doesn't wanna do it, and we have issues with her, we have no power with her, because we didn't sign the contract, we didn't do it, so any issues with that contractually, we have no skin in the game, no teeth, so you're gonna have to go down and see the selectmen, I think, who was started this, Ben Barrett started this whole deal on his own, trying to do it on the outside, so he, they signed the contract, they're the ones that have to deal with her.
We paid her a hundred and thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollars, that's town money.
No, that was Kendall money.
Well, it's still taxpayer money, well.
I still think it's a good.
But it is, because we're using it on behalf of the town.
But we didn't sign, we didn't do the contract, we didn't sign, so we don't have any, we don't have any hammer overhead.
The fact is, there shouldn't need to be a hammer, she was hired and received, whether she received all of the money, or the majority of the money, you know, she should finish the job.
Yep, so if she doesn't wanna do it, then you have to deal with the selectmen and her, and they, if there's gonna be suits back and forth, it has to be between those two ends, not us.
So you don't want, you don't wanna hear from the rest of the committee ever, either?
What is the committee gonna offer, though, Phil?
He just doesn't wanna listen to what I say.
The committee hasn't done anything wrong, this isn't against the committee.
What do you think the committee's gonna offer?
Well, I, I feel that it would only be fair.
No, you can't, you can't feel, sir, you, you, you're offering your committee, so what is the committee gonna do, you can't use, I feel.
Because you are impugning the report, and I, I feel a committee member should have a right to be able to say what they think about it.
So you think that the committee's gonna come into it and change our minds? They're gonna say, they're gonna state, they're gonna state that the plan is good?
I honestly think, well, let's put it this way, this board trusted people representing town boards to come together and write them, and.
Okay, but Phil, all due respect, we've asked questions.
Yeah.
Right, and you can't answer them.
What do you mean I can't answer them?
Phil, did you confirm that every person in this town got interviewed? Yes or no?
First of all.
Yes or no? Yes or no?
I'm not gonna answer, because it's not a yes or no question.
How the hell is anybody, if I said, if I asked you a question, if I asked you, did every committee person, police, police chief, fire chief, okay, everybody, were they interviewed? Yes or no?
There were two documents that list.
No, 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 Phil, yes or no, were they interviewed? You are the chairperson now, I will point the finger at you, you were the chairperson, were they interviewed? Yes or no?
Let me tell you that they had five, no, first of all, that's not how these, that's not how it works, you see.
But Phil, a master plan is the voice, is the voice of the town, all members of the town, people that work in the town, people that live in the town, Phil.
Yes, they do.
Okay, Phil, I feel that this is your plan, this is your plan, okay, this is not the town's plan.
Now, wait a minute, that's what I'm trying to tell you, you get the other, get the other committee members in then.
But why am we gonna get the other committee, Phil, why don't we invite every, every, Phil, invite every person that lives in this town, get them in here, and let's, let's, let's see what they think, let's see what they think, Phil.
But I, first of all, I haven't heard anybody argue about recommendations, all the things I hear about.
Because the recommendations are not the, the recommendations of the people, where's the starting point, where the starting points of, where are the starting points, Phil?
Why do we have to argue about the recommendations, why, why are you looking for that to happen?
Because that's what we spent all of our time on, the committee.
Let's, let, here's what.
But see, this isn't against the committee, and if you go back.
I'm just trying to understand what the problem with this board is with the recommendations.
Okay, so I think, Phil, the problem is that the master plan that was presented, you just said it yourself, the recommendations were done by the committee, nobody's complaining about the recommendations, right?
But that's the heart of the plan.
But it's not the entire plan, and the whole plan represents us, this, the consultant was hired and paid a large amount of money to present us a perfect plan, okay, you yourself just said that the recommendations were the committee, nobody's complained about the recommendations, isn't that ironic? And I think that speaks a lot to how hard the committee worked and what good work they did, the problem seems to be with the portion that the consultant was responsible for, and it's not that it's terrible, it's that it needs more, or correction, or tweaking, so that being said, that's what we're asking for, so instead of sitting here and going in circles repeatedly, over and over, let's give her what we have and ask her to amend it, and if she won't amend it, then we will go in circles again and talk about it, but in the meantime.
No, we won't, no, at that point, it's, it's gonna be dumped back.
Let's move forward.
It's gonna be dumped back to Tuesday night crew who hired her.
And to have the committee come in, this is not a problem with the committee, we are not looking to diss the committee, the committee did a good job, you just said it, and you say we're not complaining about the recommendations.
No, that's, that's all those guys, I know, I know one of them, he dumped it back on us because they don't, this is a political football, and they wanna say we screwed up.
Well, that's great.
This was started by Ben Barrett.
I disagree.
He went out and said, we're gonna do the master plan.
I disagree, the consultant did not do a good job.
Mastering a law.
The consultant dropped us and didn't even come back to us for a period of time.
So that was dumped by him.
She never met our deadlines, she set the deadlines and never, ever met them.
And if we drop it.
I sit and go on and on, you don't want me to, it will just make it look worse.
No, that was a problem.
Let's move forward.
But I think what was written in the report, I think was done, done a very good job, it summarized it, so, so, so I just wanna come back to the list of town officials, I know this is something that really, really.
We voted, right? We voted.
Yeah, it's done, yeah.
So let's adjourn.
But the top, but there is two documents I, which I will send out to you.
No, I don't give a.
But, but that answers part of the questions that Paul has.
I want it, and the plan, who they talked to, done, I don't wanna see documents, I'm done.
We need to adjourn.
I said we're gonna put it in the plan as the appendix, Jack.
Motion to adjourn.
Put the names in there.
All in favor?
We're done.
It has all the names.